Thirty, I will go ahead and call this morning's meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order. The first item on our agenda this morning is the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
A motion offered from Commissioner Gross to approve the agenda, a second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Citizens to be heard this morning, are there any citizens in the audience wishing to address the board on anything that is not on the agenda? Any citizens to be heard? Also, as always, we do offer the opportunity for folks to submit comment in person through writing or virtually. If that's something you'd like, you can message our administrator. Steve, had you had any correspondence in regards to this item?
I've not met him, Chair.
Thank you. The approval of the payment of bills and vouchers.
Move approval.
Motion from Commissioner Campbell to approve the payment of bills and vouchers, a second from Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The item carries. The minutes from the August 9th Board of Commissioners meeting are in the packet.
Move approval.
A motion to approve the minutes as presented from Commissioner Kaylee.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The minutes are approved.
That's the bills, the...
I got those. Too quick today. Our item number two on the agenda this morning is a presentation of the Community Center Library Project. For the city of Morehead, we do have Morehead Mayor Shelley Carlson with us this morning. We have James Hand and Lisa Borgan. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you so much for providing us this opportunity to give you information about the Yes 56560 campaign. I am actually not going to be presenting. I'm here to support kind of the co-chairs of this campaign, James and Lisa, so I'm going to turn it over to them to introduce themselves and I'm going to do the tech.
All right. All right. Good afternoon, or good morning, everyone. I'm Lisa Borgan. I'm a lifelong citizen of Morehead and a volunteer for this mayor's task force for
the regional library and community center.
My name is James Hand, and I'm not quite lifelong, but a majority of my life has been here in Morehead. I'm on the Parks Board, EDA, a few other things, MBA, and again, also a member of the task force, and so happy to be here today.
So, we're going to kind of give you a little historical perspective of where we started and where we are and where we're going. So, the task force members are noted on the screen, and all of these folks have volunteered their time to get us to where we are today. So, you know, the questions that we are here to answer is why do we need this community center library? What are our needs and how will it all work? So, the library currently contains about 60,000 print materials. There are some gathering spaces, technology access for 38 computers, there's some children's programming, literacy development, meeting room space, and it is the Lake Agassiz Regional Library headquarters. They get about 500 people a day. Those include job seekers or families, business, community, hobbyists, and nonprofits. So, one thing about the current library, if you've been in it recently, you will see that there is a very extensive bank of computers. You know, many of our community members don't have the ability to have Wi-Fi in their home, so going to the library to get information, going to the library to apply for jobs is really essential for many folks. Our current library is really an aging facility. It was built in 1962, which makes it 60 years old. There was an addition added in 1988. There really is not enough space within the current library. The restrooms are inadequate, the HVAC, lighting, plumbing, roof leaks, there's just a lot of things going on with a building that is 60 years old. There was a feasibility assessment done on the current library, and basically they found that the Morehead Library Facility is not up to the standards of a 21st century library, nor can the building be fully or economically renovated to become one. So, we also did some community engagement, took a survey in the spring of 2021. There's 874 residents responded. We've had small group interviews and focus groups, just kind of get an idea of what are the needs and what would they like to see in a new library. And then a community center. So, you know, we are one of three communities in this larger FM area, and we don't have that community center, that place for people to gather. There isn't a place for any age people, from kids to seniors, to go in the middle of winter if you wanted to go for a walk or get out and meet people and gather. We just don't have anything like that. And so, we're looking for a space that can be year-round, great place for gathering, playing, collaborating, et cetera. And we have a very small poll on the Hand residents on why we need this or what's going on in the winter.
Right. So, yeah, the quotes there, the "I'm bored," "What can we do?" "It's negative 30 out and the kids need to burn some energy." Yeah, those are direct quotes from our household and from what I hear, other households in Morehead as well.
Mojo.
So, yeah, that's a big part of the need here.
So, this is just a timeline of where we've been and where we're going. So, in May of 2021, the city went to the legislature to get approval for a half-cent sales tax. Once they approved that, then this task force was formed under Mayor Carlson, and we started looking at what would this, what could it look like? How do we pitch it to the city? Because the city council would also have to approve putting it on the ballot in November. In January, we did go to the city council, and they unanimously approved us putting the measure on the ballot in November. And then we started some meetings. We had some open meetings, listening sessions, offering information at the center mall. We had several hundred people come to those. And then May through July, the group has been working on some programming development. And our next steps are to continue to get the word out, campaign for our citizens to vote yes in November of 2022. So, part of our mission as the group was to look at a site selection. So, as a group, we determined that the city of Morehead owned several nice properties, and we should be looking at a property that's already owned by the city rather than investing in property. So, we looked at, I believe it was six different areas in the city of Morehead to try to determine what would meet the needs of the community. And we really wanted it to have access to public transit. We wanted it to be connected to other amenities in the city. There has to be ample parking. We were looking for a piece of property that was already owned by the city. We were looking for economic diversity around the project, and then some existing infrastructure. So, we actually had a pretty extensive matrix that we looked at when we were vetting these different properties, and what it all boiled down to was the city center, center mall area really hit all the boxes for us.
I just had a couple of things. When you look at the orange, different shapes on the map there, we were pretty intentional about looking at areas, you know, throughout the city of Morehead, so we didn't want to just focus on, you know, the center of the city. We looked at like Southside Regional Park and a spot up north, and we looked at the existing library site as well as considered. But when you look at the size of the facility now and what's being proposed, the existing site is just simply too small, and there's not enough space for parking around it, and it is not adequate for what we're looking to do here. So, that's why we're focusing on a different downtown location.
So, this word cloud basically represents the feedback that we receive from the citizens of Morehead. So, we asked people to just give us a few words on what are you looking for in a community center law library? Or library? We don't need a law library. We have one here in this building. Okay. So, at any rate, the more frequently the word showed up, the bigger and bolder it is in the word cloud. So, you can see that people are really looking for indoor play area, a walking track, maker, hands-on learning spaces, you know, gathering, collaborative spaces, some green spaces, meetings, hangouts, and it really kind of all melded into exactly what we were thinking that we should be offering in a community center.
And so, now to the exciting part. So, we're going to, we've worked with JLG, who did a lot of work pro bono to date on this project, to work to give us some renderings for the vision of the project, because it's one thing to talk about, okay, here's the needs we want to need, it's a need, meet. It's another thing to actually see kind of what we're talking about. So, this rendering, most people are probably familiar with now. It's the downtown, this mall redevelopment plan that the city and Roers have put out. If you click on the next slide, it zooms in, and the building a little bit to the left there is the rendering of what this project, what the vision for this is. And as you, you know, all well know as being part of projects in the past, you know, these can, these will develop and it will change over time. We don't have, you know, DD drawings or anything like that. These are really just, okay, we're trying to picture what this could look like. If we move on to the next slide, okay, so the first thing we're talking about is, you know, what does a modern library look like? Because it's probably the number one question early on I got when talking to people about this is why do we need to invest in a new library? You know, because all I, a lot of people think of is stacks of books. And a library, a modern library is so much more than that. So, if you look at this first rendering, it really does a good job of showing, you know, the word cloud talked about, indoor green space, and we've got the walking track, which from Parks Board perspective, the walking track is one of our most requested items. Indoors, especially in the winter, almost anyone of all demographics would have been asking for an indoor walking track. And this, to me, is very unique in that it's not just a track, you know, around a basketball court in a pre-engineered metal building. This is a much more interesting and socially encouraging, you know, interaction with other people type of track, which I get really excited about. And when you look at the library itself, just how bright and open it is, the idea of separating the main library from the children's library area, I know when I have my kids in the library currently, where it's all on one level, it can get a little, I get a little anxious because my kids are seven, five, and four, and they're not great at being quiet. And so, this, that separation is really exciting, the idea that, you know, the library should be a place where kids are having fun, getting information and learning and getting their programming. And here's a rendering of, in the children's area, which Megan at the library promised that they can organize books by color like this rendering is showing, so we have to hold her to that.
No.
But, you know, just again, a lot of natural light, openness, and just a very welcoming place to be and explore. We can move to the next one. Yeah, one of the terms that we hear and we talk about is the community living room, and this really helps with the, this being a gathering place for everybody, every one of all ages. And we've got, you know, lots of open, we've got, you know, tables and couches and places to gather and meet. We've got a coffee, a coffee bar on the main level there, which was, you know, even though I don't think it was a big, I was on here, it's a medium to large size word on the word cloud, I would say internally that was a pretty important one as well. So, that would be exciting to have, and it really just adds to that, having this one center space facility where you can do a lot of different things. You know, mom and dad can be getting a cup of coffee while the kids are, which we'll show in a little bit, playing in the indoor play area or getting materials from the library. Here we go, the indoor natural playground. So, we're playing off of, and wanting to kind of expand on the Rotary's indoor playground, or excuse me, natural playground that they're putting just north of the mall, and embrace that and bring that inside as well, so that when it is, you know, negative 30 out, you know, we can, we can have a place to go and give those kids a place to burn energy. And one thing that the rendering doesn't quite do it justice, in my opinion, is how much space is dedicated to this. Because actually, if you can go back one slide, like one thing that's easy to miss, if you look all the way in the back, that blue in the back, I mean, there's a multi-level indoor, or excuse me, tube slide that's coming down. So, that's a pretty significant amenity that kind of gets washed out in the back of that. Now, if you want to go to the next slide, you know, having an item like this column that's wrapped in tree bark and having a treehouse structure built around it with a bridge that connects to another element on the other side there, I mean, that's the kind of scope and vision that we have for this. And then you can see a rock climbing wall. So, definitely not your typical library that you think of. I mean, this is so much more than that. So, when it comes to the sales tax to help fund it, which the county is certainly familiar with, the local option sales tax, but we feel it's such a strong benefit and the best way to fund all or majority of the project, because 30% of the money in is from people outside in the community. So, if you can get a project paid a third by, almost a third, by people from out of town and visitors, that's a huge benefit. The amount it's scheduled to generate yearly is 1.6 million, and a study done by the University of Minnesota Extension Office estimated that it would cost the average Morehead resident $2 a month. And just looking at comparing to our neighbors, so we're currently at 7.375 for our sales tax, and our neighbors are at 7.5. West Fargo has a half-cent sales tax on their ballot this November. So, if both were to pass, we would be basically right in the middle of West Fargo and Fargo. So, we're certainly not putting something on the ballot that makes Morehead an anomaly as far as the sales tax goes. The estimated construction and financing cost is 31.59 million. That's the amount that the state has approved to put on the ballot, and that is an all-in number. The, there is still opportunity, and we just heard yesterday that we qualified for a federal grant for $1 million for entrepreneurship programming or piece of this that will be incorporated, which Mayor Carlson can touch on more. But that's just one example of how we anticipate and hope that this project will continue to grow once the sales tax is passed, because we are encouraging and talking to other partners who may want to work with us to expand what this project could include. So, as a base project, we certainly have heck of an opportunity here to meet a lot of needs for Morehead and the area, but there's just, the sky's the limit as far as what this could end up being in the end, so we're very excited about those opportunities. If anyone out there wants to help get this thing passed and get it built, we basically, the main thing we can do is spread the word and make sure that all the information's out there, that people know what they're voting for and understand that it's not just a warehouse for books, that it's so much more than that. To donate to the campaign, you can go to yes56560.com. There's also all the information we shared today. If the renderings aren't up yet, they will be soon, but all the information is there. You know, share it on social media with your friends, all that good stuff. And if you'd like to participate, we'll be doing tabling events at different community events between now and November 8th, and we encourage people to sign up to help with that and with that.
And yeah, I just wanted to add, the 1 million federal grant is in the federal budget right now. It was proposed by Senator Klopishar and Senator Smith. My understanding is once it's in the federal budget, it's highly unlikely it will be removed from there, and that would be for the entrepreneurship center that would really help to elevate the maker space that we're proposing in the community center, side of the community center library. Kind of my comment is that this is really a time for Morehead citizens to be bold. This is time for us to put a little skin in the game. We've never had a local option sales tax before, and this is a time for Morehead to do something like this, to really elevate that space. It can create a destination, and it really, for all to go to this community center library in our downtown, and it creates that catalyst to really revitalize the economic development for the footprint of the Morehead Center Mall. It's kind of the kindling that's going to light the fire, because developers are going to know that there are people that are going to be going to the library and the community center, and so it makes it much easier for them to say, yes, this is definitely where we want to put some development dollars in. And like James was saying, there are also partners in the community that have seen some of these renderings, and they're really excited about it, and we're going to, you know, hopefully do some of the layering, like with the $1 million from the entrepreneurship. So, 31.59 million is the base, so we can keep adding layers onto that, and maybe it could even be expanded. So, we are available and open for any questions or comments you guys have.
All right. Thank you so much. I just want to clarify a financial piece a little bit. So, when we built our correctional facility and law enforcement center, we also went to the voters for something like this. And for us, it really was, this was a need, that we needed to choose a financing option. It was either going to be through sales tax pieces or all of it would have to go to the levy. In terms of how you look at the future financing of this, are you hoping that it will be all encompassed by what the sales tax revenue generates, or will there have to be a portion that will go on the tax or your normal levy?
No, it would all be encompassed with the local option sales tax and then looking for some of those private partnerships to help layer it and even elevate it more, but we wouldn't be looking at going to a levy. But to your point, as far as a need, this is also a need for our community, because as Lisa said, our library is extremely old. It, quite frankly, is falling apart. To just do the HVAC system, I think it is, it would be over $1 million. And when you take piece by piece, we're looking at millions and millions of dollars. And so, if we are not able to get this local option sales tax, then we're going to have to be looking at other options to be able to fix up our current red-rated facility, which is our library.
This commission certainly knows about fund renovation projects.
We do.
Yeah, I heard through the grapevine.
Commissioner Ebinger.
Yeah, I, first of all, want to express my gratitude to the citizens and everybody involved in this, including the mayor and the city council. I got two hats on I wear on this. One is I'm a member of the Lake Agassiz Regional Library Board. And what strikes me, having, since I got on the board, is the diverse needs that are met by a really incredible staff of people out there in a facility that's foundering. This isn't just books, and it isn't just for the kids. We've got people where this is their sole access to the internet, and that involves jobs, that involves training, that involves the criminal justice system. With the courts in the condition they've been since COVID, people need the internet to make their appearance, to confer with their attorneys. This is, and the library has stepped up on that, not just by having the resources there, but by having committed people who can walk, older citizens such as myself, who need a little IT help once in a while, or people who have no access to the internet and don't know how it works. And we've got young men and women there that'll walk them through it and work with them, applying for jobs, applying for benefits. That's a critical part of this, and they're making it work with a facility that is totally hostile to getting the job done. The other hat, well, and part of that is, you know, I was police chief in Morehead when we were getting the money together for new law enforcement center, new correctional facility. This is very similar to the situation we found ourselves in, and the facility had totally aged out of being, any hope of being renovated. And we're in that situation now. This is not building a new library because we want one, we're building a new library because we need one, and the old one can't be revived. The other hat I wear on this is somebody who was a Morehead City employee for 12 years. Thank you for breaking the inertia, Mayor, and your council. And thank you, members of that, of this committee, to get this excitement generated. This city has got so much potential, particularly in the river area. And you look across the river and see what Renaissance Zone has done in Fargo, we can step into that. And the growth in our area is only going to get more pronounced with the diversion, with companies being reluctant to put employees and facilities in an area that's flood-prone. When that goes away, you're going to see a surge, and we need to be ready to meet it. This is a great incentive for investors and people that want to develop, to look and say, this community's put all this money in this area, we want to be part of it. So, I'm excited about this, and I am grateful for the work that's been put into it.
Thank you, Commissioner Ebinger. And I would agree that, you know, this is, what we're trying to create is a 21st century library, and actually Jane Polly did a short segment on CBS Morning. If you Google YouTube, Jane Polly, 21st Century Library, it'll pop up. It's about a five-minute video. It's also on the website, too, for people who want to watch it. And I think that the people that have, it has illuminated and really showcased what a 21st century library can be, which is truly a community center with a library that has some books in it.
Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you. Just briefly, and follow up on what Commissioner Mojo had said about the region or the law enforcement center and our correctional facility. You know, we were fortunate that we had the sales tax that covered the bricks and mortar. It goes beyond that, and it becomes, there also is the operational piece that follows. And my questions are going to go a little bit to that. I think there are questions that maybe some citizens might want to know, and so, from an operational standpoint, and the library, I get that, that piece I don't, you know, that's all part of the library system, and it's, a lot of it is funded in that way, and Clay County contributes to that funding of our library system. In terms of the community center, what is the vision once that's opened and how it will work? Is it something, because obviously, this is something new to Morehead, and it's also going to create some additional job opportunities, because you're going to have some additional labor that's going to have to go into that. And is that going to be funded, for example, by a membership? Has there been discussions about that? Would there be a family membership purchase?
The community center would be free and open to the public.
Okay.
But there are opportunities for entrepreneurs. So, for instance, in the coffee bar area, you know, that might be a space that we build out, and then it's leased out to an entity that then does the operation side of that coffee bar, sandwich shop area. Even the climbing wall, I think of opportunities for an individual like John Walters, who does Nature of the North and provides classes on wall climbing. And the maker space, too, could be something that, there could be a potential for another entity to operate it. So, there has been discussion, there will likely need to be new positions that would be open within the city, but that would be several years down the road. So, we have been talking about that, but right now, we're just focused on getting a yes, because we can't go too far down into that rabbit hole until we know we're building something.
And then, in terms of residents outside the city, we here represent the entire county, is this a facility that would be accessible to all Clay County residents?
Absolutely. That's part of the sales tax. It's mandated as part of the sales tax that there has to be a regional impact, and so there would be... that there has to be a regional impact. And so there would be opportunity for everybody around Clay County, Fargo, Morehead, the metro area, to have them utilize this area.
That's right. I was going with that, because of the sales tax issue.
Correct.
I wouldn't want to be excluding somebody who might live outside the boundaries of Morehead to be using that facility. Thank you. That answers my questions.
Commissioner Kaylee.
Thank you. One of the things that we are hearing constantly is that, over the last few years, mental health issues have risen exponentially. And a big piece that I am hearing is that part of it is, we just need more spaces and opportunities to build connection within our community. And so I see this as meeting a need in that sphere as well, with the mental health and the vitality and the wellness of our community. There are very few places that you can just go and be for free, to have opportunities to meet with your friends, your loved ones, and community members. And so this is a really critical need, that community center piece. And the library piece as well, I mean, I've been very open that I work at the library, and so I do see that need there. And the wonderful stories of, it's not just getting a book recommendation or checking something out. I had a mom tell me once that coming to our baby story times saved her, because she had moved to this community as a single mom. She didn't know anybody. She had a newborn with some extra needs, and coming to that program really saved her and got her connected to a supportive community of parents that were going through the same things that she was. That is what the library is. That is what these community spaces are, and that is what we need. And so I'm so excited about this project, and to see the vision that you're developing. And it's going to be such a gorgeous foundational piece, to inject so much vitality into the economic development of this region. So, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much for your presentation today. I, too, am hopeful that there are so many different partners within our community that should this pass and come to fruition, that it will be a space for community ed opportunities and classes, and extension to offer classes. I really think the sky's the limit in terms of the partnership component. And certainly, our region is such a hub for sports tournaments and other tournaments during the winter, and hate to see them always spending their money on another side of the river, and not money, but not only money, but time. And so to have this option for folks to go and stay a while and connect would really be quite an asset. So I'm hopeful for your campaign as you move forward, and thank you certainly for the information. It helps us, as we can, we often field questions from constituents in regards to this as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do you want to give that website one more time, Mayor?
Absolutely. It is yes56560.com. And then there's also a Facebook component, yes56560.
Thank you so much. Thanks for your time. Our next item on the agenda this morning is a request for approval of change order number seven for our resource recovery facility construction project. Administrator Larson.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. As you mentioned, you do have change order, change order number seven before you, for your consideration. We have seven different items, ranging from some electrical revisions, some sites signage changes based on the new entrance or the different entrance to the facility that we dealt with a number of months ago. Some changes with the addition of the generator that this board approved. We had some additional cost there in CP 010. Chain link fence to cover, protect for retaining wall where the semis go up and down as they're getting the trash. And also, we changed the stoops to the full frost depth. That was not in the initial drawings, to make sure that we don't have any shifting of those stairwells going into the building. The total dollar amount for change order, this change order would be $147,860. This would be an increase to the guaranteed maximum price. And with that, I'd yield for any additional questions.
Thank you. The discussion for these items have all been pretty well-vetted through our construction committee. We really have identified some safety components in this piece, but also making sure that we are addressing longevity fixes, so that we're not having to go back in two years and adjust components to the concrete footings, too. Any other questions?
How much are we over the original bid, is that?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, we're in the process of putting that all together. Right now, we are, we have, we are underfunding of what we have anticipated. We'll have a solid number for you probably by the next board meeting, but we're over, I would say we're right around a million dollars.
Commissioner.
You know, Commissioner Gross, in answer to your question, I think it's right on the second page here, because the original, I think the question you asked is, what was the original gross maximum price? And that was 18 million 363,000. And with this change order now, it's 19 million 139. So it's roughly about $800,000 more than the original gross maximum price that we originally adopted. And those are, that covers in all the change orders that have occurred since that original GMP. And that would include today's change order number seven.
That's correct.
And certainly, not to put her on the spot, but our representative, Heather Keeler, is here, and we've had significant conversations with our state legislation. We do have a state grant that's, we're thankful for, that's going into this, but unfortunately, the cost of construction has just risen so exorbitantly. And so we're hopeful that we could maybe have follow-up dialogues at the state level, based on what the local addition is costing all of us to construct these facilities. But certainly, we've, no one likes to hear about change orders or additions to the budget, but our hope and belief is that the changes that we are recommending will really save us substantial amounts in the future.
Yes, Commissioner Kaylee.
How are we planning to pay for the increased costs?
Madam Chair, we have, essentially, part of the bonding process, we also, we had the opportunity to take the premium, premium dollars on bond because of a rating this board approved to take that premium. And so that, over $800,000 is to cover part of that. So we're looking to utilize those funding. But as we talked about, the premium dollars are only able to be utilized for the project, and so, or paying down the project. And so utilizing the premium and the vision of this board is really why we took that for the uncertainties of the project.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yeah, Commissioner Kaylee, I think there's four basic components of the dollars coming in for this project. And the first one was the 7.5 million state grant that Commissioner Mojo talked about. We issued bonds in the amount of 10 million 899,000. We had originally anticipated using solid waste fund balances or reserves of 3.5 million. So that total of those dollars is 21 million 899,000, just shy of 20 million, 21 million 900,000. And, you know, so everything to date, you know, when you, we're looking at, there's also a lot of costs that are outside of the GMP that have to come into play. All of the semi-trailers and all those things that we purchased, those are not part of the GMP. But, so right now, I mean, just to, for the board to give you a little reassurance here, our total all-in price to date, including today's number, if it's approved, our total commitment in funds is 20 million 791,000, which means we'd still have about 1.1 million left of the funds that we've originally used to finance this project.
That 3.5 million in solid waste reserves, is that the total fund balance for that reserve?
No, that's just, that's what we designated to take out. The fund reserve and solid waste is much greater than that. So I mean, and there are certain things in the solid waste fund balance that were required to keep, for example, post-closure on landfills and those types of things. So there's always funds available for that as well. But that's, you know, I think we could get a number from Lori, if you wanted to know that number, but I'm assuming that number's probably, that 3.5 isn't even half of what we'd have in our reserves for solid waste.
But a significant portion of what's left is for other things down the road.
Well, I mean, there's, well, the post-closure is even separate than that.
Okay.
So there's, you know, so, yeah.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Gross.
Is there a limit to how much construction person can go over their original bid, or as long as we keep approving it, it's okay?
Well, I think, so here's part of the discussion, and this maybe goes back to probably a board action a couple of months ago. Part of the issue with the changes to the guaranteed maximum price was that we dealt with unprecedented weather issues this year. That's really part of it. And having 11 blizzards when we were out there and de-watering issues to appropriately deal with the water that was coming in, you recall, those bills were upwards of $300,000 per month. And we worked with our, the construction engineers to really say, look, we're understanding that this, these are events that were really out of everyone's control. And we kind of, I don't want to say split the difference, but kind of came to an agreement that said, in order to get this project across the finish line, this is what needs to happen. And so, yes, there are limits to what guaranteed maximum price is. What is the purpose of having a guaranteed maximum price, if you're adjusting it? But based on what was in the contract, unexpected events, weather being one of them, and pandemic-related increases, we really felt that in order to avoid any further action in regards to collecting or finishing the contract, that was, that was the best solution. Yeah, I mean, certainly, none of us, pandemic-related construction costs, period, have been a nightmare. And then you just couple that with what the weather did, and it was out of all of our control. And we're thankful and hopeful, and smiling at James here behind a chair, that we will be completed before the calendar goes to '23. So we're pushing this as well as we can.
Yeah, and, you know, that's good explanations. And I, obviously, the winter conditions were harsh. I, you know, I think the results of the pandemic in terms of what it did to being able to bring materials in. For example, one little piece of our change order was $150,000 increased cost for geofome, which is one, just one thing, $150,000. And that was as a result of the pandemic and the inability to get it at previous prices. And, you know, so you could say, well, we had a gross maximum price. But within that gross maximum price, there's language in there that protects both sides in terms of these unusual events. Whether we would have been in a construction manager at risk, or the other type of just standard construction, those cost increases would have occurred, and ultimately, we would have had some responsibility to pay. So it doesn't, you know, just because you have a construction manager at risk, doesn't mean that there isn't still protections in there for unforeseen circumstances. And that's exactly what we had.
Yes, Commissioner Ebinger.
Just, I know a lot of the averages, as it has been alluded to, it's been weather-related during the winter. Are we at a point now to where infrastructure is caught up, to where we're not going to have the drainage issues and problems this winter, even if we have a repeat of the bad weather? Or is this something that still presents a potential?
Yeah, if I can, Madam Chair. So I think the answer to that is yes, probably. Because what we're seeing now is, and just at our construction meeting yesterday, because of where we're at now, and the additional work, and the drainage, and the, for example, now they've gotten the proper infrastructure in, so that when we'd had rains, it just didn't come off the roof and just come right down onto the construction area. As of this week now, that has been resolved. So now, most of that rain, when it comes off, it goes to the proper channel and into our collection area for, so the de-watering issue shouldn't be, I think that'll answer that problem moving forward, so.
I guess I was just concerned about the number two bid, or how much was some of this stuff included in that bid, in their bid? I mean, we keep on saying, well, COVID and stuff like that has come up, but, you know, high-speed door transformers got nothing to do with COVID or any of that. Some of this stuff, I mean, doesn't go into COVID. Was that in someone else's bid that we wouldn't have to come on with?
No, I think, Madam Chair, Commissioner Gross, I think that, you know, in all the different projects that we've done, we have contingencies set aside specifically for different things that, you know, please, the high-speed door transformers, for example, that was, that was a difference between what was in the drawing versus what it needed when it came to the project. So we know, I mean, the reason why those contingencies are there, also in addition, you know, to not address the weather piece, but we have those contingencies set aside for some of those things that, even through the best planning, we find that there's different things that need to be changed.
You know, Commissioner Gross, going to your question, though, I, you know, I think at the time we accepted construction engineers as our construction manager at risk, that was a bid process that went through. And all of the submittals that were in, in terms of other companies that were not selected, they would have had to base their price on the same drawings, the same stuff that was anticipated at the time. So like the thing you're talking about, about the new door style, that's something that came after the fact. So that would have had to have been a change order, no matter who the new contractor would be, because they would have bid using the previous door system that was in the drawings.
Okay.
Okay? Does that, does that?
Well, I'm just wondering, at what point are we probably responsible for not picking the second bidder or whatever, you know?
Yeah.
If all this stuff is, we're adding all this stuff now, I mean, was some of that stuff included?
Those things would not have been in the second bidder's bid either.
Very good.
Any further discussion? Board wishes.
I'd move approval of change order number seven.
There's a motion from Commissioner Campbell to approve change order number seven.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried.
Thank you.
We're a little behind, but we did have a public hearing advertised for nine o'clock. This does require us opening the public hearing.
We can get a motion to open the meeting.
There's a motion from Commissioner Gross to open the public hearing.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We're in an open hearing now to talk about a petition for a text amendment to our development code, considering to adopt an ordinance 2022, or 2022-3 for swimming pools in shoreline districts. Planning Director Matt Jacobson, good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Yes, this was a petition for a text amendment to the Clay County Development Code to allow for swimming pools as a permitted use in shoreline areas. This was brought forward to the Planning Commission in July, and they made the recommendation unanimously to your Board of Commissioners to approve this petition. So I'll give you a little bit of background. This came, this petition came This came, this petition came from RNG Development, Rick Larson, and he was looking to add swimming pools as a permitted use in shoreline zones. Our shoreline zones are special protection, special protection, low development, residential district, and general use district. And policy considerations pertaining to this petition. In our Clay County Comprehensive and Transportation Plan, we do have a Natural Resources Shoreland and Stormwater category and a goal to protect and enhance the health and vitality of Clay County surface waters, including lakes, river streams, for the benefit and enjoyment of Clay County residents and visitors. Two of the objectives under that would be to reduce development pressure on natural environment lakes in Clay County and to continue to enforce shoreline regulations on Clay County lakes, rivers, and streams. So some considerations for, for this request. Swimming pools are currently allowed in most of our other districts that, that allow for residential uses in, in Clay County. This use would be consistent with the Minnesota Shoreland Rule 6120, so long as the swimming pools would meet the structure setbacks and impervious surface standards for lots in shoreline areas. And these could also be subject to floodplain standards if applicable in terms of, of, of building to the, the floodproofing standards. We have several pools already in shoreline zoning districts, and we did not receive any public comments for this request. So right now, we do have a, a standard for swimming pools that includes fencing, all swimming pools being required to be fenced to restrict access to swimming areas. And the Planning Commission had discussed, in addition to permitting swimming pools as a permitted use in shoreline areas, also updating the standard just because a lot of these lots in our rural Clay County area, it's a little bit different than having a swimming pool in, say, incorporated communities such as Morehead or Dilworth or Barnesville, where you have a lot smaller lots, you have a lot more density. So there, and also, swimming pool, I guess, safety technology has come a long way, and there are several alternative safety measures that, that could be used in the place of or in combination with fencing. And so their recommendation includes updating the standard to, to require that swimming pools, they can be fenced unless they, the, the owner can demonstrate that an alternative safety measure could be put into place. And so these, these measures include locking covers, power covers, vegetation that prevents access, or other design features that would restrict access to swimming areas from other properties. And so we do, in our Development Code, in Chapter Four, Administration Enforcement, have criteria and review standards for zoning district and text amendments. And there are two findings that would, that would need to be made, and the Planning Commission did go through all of these, and they were affirmative for all of, all of their findings in, for this particular text amendment. And so as, as amendments have been done in, in the past to the Development Code, I do have a draft ordinance that was included in your packets. This ordinance would just essentially amend our use table 5.1 of the Development Code to allow the use swimming pool fenced, amended to just swimming pool. And that, that would be added as a permitted use to our county shoreline zoning districts. And then the standards would be amended to allow for those alternative safety measures in place of or in addition to the fencing requirement that's currently there. Any questions for me at all? Oh, one thing I will add before I take any questions is I did talk extensively with the DNR about this, and this is consistent with Minnesota Shoreland rules. Other counties permit swimming pools in shoreline areas, so we wouldn't be, we would be completely, this would be completely acceptable as, as a use in shoreline zoning districts.
Thank you for that clarification. Any board questions? Any board questions? I did see, I, I was not at this Planning Commission hearing. Commissioner Gross, though, did attend. I did see in regards to this, you didn't have any comments during the public hearing at that level. Do you have any correspondence from folks wishing to speak at this public hearing?
We did not, Madam Chair.
Are there any more board questions on this item? Are there any members of the public wishing to address the board in regards to this public hearing?
Move to close.
Second.
A motion from Commissioner Campbell to close, a second from Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, carried. Matt, thanks for addressing the item on the DNR. That was a really important component as reading through this. It's, it's always good to make sure that we're in compliance in regards to not only our comprehensive plans and, and those pieces, but the wishes for the DNR in terms of our natural habitats.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-3.
A motion from Commissioner Gross to adopt ordinance 2022-3?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
Thank you for a thorough packet again, Matt, and for going above and beyond.
My pleasure.
Provide us the information.
Last call, any further discussion? All those in favor of the, the motion to adopt the ordinance signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners.
Item five this morning is the Public Health Budget Discussion. We have our Public Health Director Kathy McKay with us.
Staff, good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I have with me Carmen. She is our Director of Public Health Finance, so she will supply information that you may have. I believe you did receive probably three pages of information. The Public Health Budget is always more complicated than most. We have so many program areas that we're required to report to the state on and our areas of responsibility, and we have all of our individual grants that have to be separated and reported on. So I know it gets to be a, a bit complicated on how it's laid out. The first one that I can go through is, is the two-page, it's the, it'll say the board review, and it gives the information from 2020, 21, 22, and 23. So that might be the easiest to start with. And I'll just go through, please stop with questions as we move along. We have our first area that is our, assure our adequate infrastructure. So we have some, any administrative costs that are in there, including salary costs for administration and supervisors, et cetera, and audit expenses and various things that cannot be funded by some of the other program areas. So that's kind of the whole overall infrastructure funding. We also have an MDH Infrastructure Grant, so that's listed as well in 2023. So we have the revenue expenses listed on the side for the 2023. Our only new request, and we can go through the new requests, is listed on the, the right, and, and we have a page that describes those new requests, so I can talk through that at that time. The next area is our Prevent Infectious Disease. That's our immunizations. We provide immunizations to adults and children. Under the ones that have no insurance, we provide immunizations for those that have, don't have the ability to obtain those any, any other location. So we provide a lot of immunizations, obviously, the COVID vaccine, influenza vaccine. And the DPNC is Disease Prevention and Control. We're required to follow up on any infectious diseases in our community. Tuberculosis is one example. We have to follow someone who has active tuberculosis. We provide the medications, we provide the follow-up. Sometimes that's ongoing for a long period of time. So that's some of the requirements we have that fit into this program area. The next area is Disaster Preparedness and Response. Obviously, our emergency preparedness was really going strong through the COVID last two years, and they're, they're to write any preparedness plans for any infectious disease. We also have our EMS in here. This is where the ambulance is included, and the ambulance is something this board will determine the amount that, per the request of what they need for their ambulance services. And then we also have, we have a trained individual in our department that can provide CPR to our department, to detox, which is required, and to any other entities in our county that may need CPR training. So that is included in there as well. And then we have the COVID-19 funding in the 2023 budget expenses and revenue, so we still have some funding that carried over from last year.
Kathy, can I ask about the ambulance piece?
Sure.
Is that the rural ambulance services?
Yep, that's the rural one, and I believe, yeah, Barnesville.
Just Barnesville?
Right, so there's a coverage gap in Clay County based on what, like, other service providers cover, and so that's why there's an agreement with Barnesville Ambulance.
Okay.
There's, the FM ambulance goes as to, they can go out to some of the rural communities as well, but oftentimes there's a, they determine what the level of need is for that ambulance call. So if Barnesville can pick it up and the level is there, then, and they'll do some of the rural counties, so that is correct. There is a gap, and they request, they've been requesting funding for quite a number of years. Environmental health is our next area. We do a delegated agreement with Food Pool Lodging, and we, we charge fees for all of the establishments that we cover throughout all of Clay County. They also do the onsite sewage treatment systems and the demolition landfill inspections. There is some fees that are attached to those as well. And then the county, the Food Pool and Lodging is awash with the fees and the expenses, but the other two, the county covers the remainder of what, what additional fees may be incurred with those treatment systems and the landfill inspections. The next areas are, it's called Healthy Communities, Healthy Behaviors. So we have our WIC, Women, Infant, Children Program, our Family Home Visiting Programs. We have a number of those, public health clinics, school health, and our health promotion area. So the public health clinic, we cover all of the clinic needs beyond immunizations that may come up. Family home visiting, we serve new moms and babies, and oftentimes they're high-risk families, and so we have programs that serve them from pregnancy to the age of three. We have our WIC program that is federal to state funding that provides the WIC program for those that qualify. Our school health, we have two schools in the rural community that we serve with our nurse. We used to have a lot more, but some of them are hiring their own individual ones, so we still cover DGF and Yulin Hiderdal. So we're serving those two schools. Our SHIP is our Health Promotion, statewide health improvement program. We get funding through the state in regards to that program, and that, there's a lot of health promotion activities that SHIP covers. We also have a suicide grant, Positive Community Norms Grant, that's under the Health Promotion area. So we're providing services in those two areas. And then we have our Health Education, which just is our tobacco compliance checks, our tobacco work that we've had. There's some wellness funds in there that we have a carryover from some funding that we got through Lakes Country Co-op. So there's some additional expenses in that area. Nothing really different than some of the previous years, so there's nothing that's alarming. Child and teen checkup outreach, you'll hear a little bit more about that in, in the next presentation. That is a grant through the state, so that's an in-and-out early hearing. We don't put any money in there. Sometimes we might get a referral, but we get paid for that if we do refugee health, if there's refugees that need to have follow-up with our health services through our clinic. We have funding that we get from the state that can serve those individuals. And then our adult health, very large area where we're providing case management services with all of the health plans they contract with us to provide those services. We're keeping families in their home. A lot of those individuals are elderly, and we're trying to keep them in their home as long as it is safe, and they have the ability to stay in their home before they end up in, into a nursing home. So it's trying to keep those people safely in their homes as long as possible. So we have a large number of individuals that we serve through that. That area is growing, and we, our, our nurses are, are way overloaded on their caseloads, so we'll be putting that in as a new request, trying to recruit RNs that are required to serve in that area. And then we have our detox withdrawal management program, and, and you all are familiar with that program. We have requested, at the very bottom, in the very little print, it's $704,000 through the social services, the request that comes to you, to continue to provide services to our, our clients that are in this program. Withdrawal management, there is the ability to bill for those that qualify, and that's only those that are in Minnesota. We have contracts with two facilities in North Dakota as well that provide clients to us, but they also pay for those services. I know that was pretty quick, so any questions before I go to the, the next is the revenue and expense comparison?
Commissioner Kaylee does have a question.
Yeah. In the adult health area, you said the workloads are too high for our current nurses. How many nurses do we have in that program, and what is the request? What, how many?
Oh, yeah, the request is in the, I'm sorry, the request is in the new request area. So each nurse, the health plans, we build a health plans either for 15-minute intervals or it's a per member per month. So there's a monthly fee or a individual per 15-minute rate. We have 12 nurses, I think around 12 nurses right now.
Full-time?
Full-time, mhm. And their caseloads, there's a, a cap for their caseloads based on what the health plan contract is, and we're well, way over that. So some of the nurses are, are really struggling to, to keep up. So there's, there's a large number of individuals that we serve. They're both on Medicaid and Medicare. And then we go into the nursing homes as well and serve those individuals, some of the individuals that we can provide case management to. So we have two nurses that go into nursing homes that can provide some, some care as well. So it's a high-need area, and so that's where the new request will come. We, we, again, as we add nurses, we will also be able to add revenue for those services they provide, so it'll come up in our new request. You'll see the, the difference in those.
So I see on your, in your bullets here, you have three public health nurses. That's what you want to add, is three full-time and then a .8 case aid?
Correct, yes.
And then that will get everybody under that cap set by the health plans as far as caseload?
Right, exactly. And it'll be a challenge, it'll be a double challenge, because it's, it's really hard to recruit RNs. That's a challenge for all the health entities, so it might be just difficult to even get candidates for that. So if it's approved, well, we'll attempt to make that happen.
And does this, this proposal of adding 3.8 allow for any growth?
Yes.
Of, of clients in that area?
Yeah, that will hopefully be enough to get the caseloads down for our current nurses, and then, and then they hopefully will have some room to add clients as we grow. We know this area is just going to be continuing to grow in our adult health.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you. I just, in your attachment D, page one, I did, I just want to clarify, you said there will be an increase expected in the 2024 levy because of the COVID, that has to do with salaries, right, for reimbursement. But, but you still list, you still list the full salaries of, you know, I'm talking about your position and Jamie's position. And then, and then there's a revenue offset right now through, through COVID dollars, right? So, so we're not, we're not reducing the salaries line item on a, okay. I just want to make sure that when we, when we look at things, we're comparing apples to apples.
Sure.
Whether, whether there's additional revenues or not. So then we can determine why it's now costing us more than it has the last couple of years.
Right, right, exactly.
Yeah. And then, and then the, going back to that ambulance, the, you have two bullet points there. The second one says it's a $17,000 is the new request amount for 2023. What is that?
We, we put 13 in there because that was the previous year. So as we understand through the county administrator that they're requesting 30 potentially for 2023. So we added the 17 in addition to the 13.
So not a 30,000 new request, 30,000. And since we'd already been doing 13, that's...
So, so there, there will show a, a $17,000 line item as a new request. Okay. Just wanted to make sure I'm...
Yep.
And, and to the caseloads that we're talked about this morning, when we have, our numbers are high, how, how does that compare with the other 86 counties in the state of Minnesota?
Some of the other counties don't provide all of the case management services that we do. Some of them do, some of them don't. And they're all struggling with caseloads. I think ours is maybe one of the higher, is what we're hearing in our region. But they all struggle a bit with caseloads. Some of the areas also have a little bit better ability to recruit our ends. Not sure if it's because we live on the border. So we're struggling with getting, competing with, you know, the health systems on the Fargo side. But sometimes the, what we're hearing from other counties, it seems they're having a lesser struggle in recruiting our ends. But caseloads, it's, I don't have the exact amounts from the other, like our regional partners, just in conversations we've had.
Kathy, as, as we move forward and we get ready to do our preliminary levy and we take into consideration all these new requests, can you provide for us the, you know, maybe a recent history of your nurses unfilled?
Well, sure.
You know, because it's been significant, hasn't it? And, and when you have unfilled positions, that means the positions that are there are overworked.
That's correct, yes.
So, so I think that's an important component that we need, we need to look at, you know, to, you know, we're talking about making sure that we fill our correctional needs and all these different areas and things that we're doing to try to enhance the ability to, to hire and retain. So you, you can have new requests, but if you haven't filled the, the original staff, that's part of the problem.
That's correct.
Okay. I just, just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Any other questions? Anything else?
Okay, on the, the expense to revenue, it just kind of breaks down, our revenue sources is on the top and the expense, expenses on the bottom, maybe to get a better clarifying that. Federal and state grants, we, we get a large number of grant funds, federal and state funds. So we're, we're always applying and we're getting, many of those are, are continued funding through the state that we receive every year. Our insurance revenue, that's really our third-party reimbursement. So we bill for anything and everything we can to the health plans and insurances. And so that's, that's our, our revenue that we receive through PMAPs, health plans, insurance, private insurance. License fees, that would be for our Food Pool and Lodging that we receive for all of those establishments. Client fees are really the, associated with mostly our detox. Those would be revenue sources from other counties that bring clients to us. Also from just our own, our own clients that we serve in our, our county as well. And contracts are, we have daycare contracts. We have the contracts with the school for the school nurses. We have the contract, obviously, with Social Services for detox funds as well internally. Our miscellaneous, we moved that out because we just, that's a, was kind of a catch-all. But we decided we needed to move it into some of the other areas that better explains what that is. County allocation is obviously what we're requesting for 2023. And then we have the ambulance. We left that blank, depending on what the board determines will be the allocation they approve. And then our expenses are, our payroll, kind of the usual, communication expenses, postage, telephone, some of our subscription and dues. We have dues to cover our software that are required for our documentation, PH Doc, and MCCC, those kinds of expenses. Marketing, advertising, you see that dipped a bit. We're trying to use more free sites in recruitment. And we've had some success in some of that. Auditing is the state audit that is for public health, obviously. Professional fees, our interpreters, some of our contracted services. We have our medical consultant that we're required to have for public health and for detox. Repair and maintenance is really our equipment, trucks, et cetera. Training and travel expenses. Rent, we had an increase in our space just down in our clinic. So we secured a couple of additional spaces down there. So there was a little bit of an increase in our rent. Insurance, workman's comp, unemployment is our, that's standard. Client care is all the needs that the clients have in detox. So whether it be medications, food, other supplies that are required for our client care. Supplies and equipment, again, is just our office equipment, health supplies, et cetera. Immunizations, we have to purchase private pay immunizations. So we do that, like our hepatitis B and others. Miscellaneous, we have our Community Health Board expenses. That's a separate audit from our public health. So they audit the Community Health Board, which is our four-county audit. And then we have some fees associated with MCIT. Again, we have the ambulance in there for the, whatever the appropriation is that the board approves. And then any of our grants and subsidies, those are Community Health Board grants. We, we are the financial responsibility for Community Health Board grants. They come in to us.
Just slip, are you?
I think, I think you're, yeah, you have, I think you're going off.
Oh, sorry, I'm on that one.
We didn't get that one.
You didn't, you didn't have that.
Oh, you didn't get that one? Oh.
Sorry.
Well, I apologize.
I guess if you can provide it to us, it would be...
Okay, sorry about that.
I don't have anything to follow along. I'm looking here to see.
Yeah, I, I thought we said that.
We've had everything else up to this point.
I apologize for that.
No, that's okay.
So it must have been pretty hard to follow along then if you didn't have the sheet. Okay. Which other one?
You just had your 2023 budget and board, the board review piece.
Nope.
I don't have that one either.
No.
You didn't get that one either?
Nope.
Oh, hmm, well.
As we're working on that, just to clarify...
And that's, oh, do you have this?
Kathy, the position that we'd added, the diversity and equity component in terms of COVID education and community outreach, that is included in your budget for next year with CARES Act funding, correct?
That's correct.
ARPA funding?
Yeah. Or no CARES Act. It's, it's included in our budget, though. She's variable hour. So it, she is included in our budget.
Okay, but, okay, good.
Right.
Okay.
Any other?
Oh, yep. Sorry, Madam Chair, we, we did use CARE, CARES Act was covering her for this year. And we have some additional funding through the state that we can use for 2023 for her.
Good, so that work can continue.
So if I can, Madam Chair, just to follow, so you just said those, those additional state dollars, is that, is that something that can be, can be used for something other than that diversity position?
Yes, that's just part of...
Okay, so where I'm going with that is because I think when, when that position was originally brought before the board, it was, it was one of those that was brought up as a two-year position, I believe. And then we, and we elected to put it in for one year with the idea in mind that we could, we can review it, see how it worked, and then maybe put it in for year two.
Sure.
With, with CARES dollars. So my point is if, if, we might already have some CARES dollars for that position.
Okay.
And so if we have that, then the dollars you got from the state, if that's still qualified to go someplace else, that might be an option.
Or based on the deadline to apply, then depending on what you got from the state, if you wanted to use the state allocation to fund that position for this next year, we can earmark those funds for continuation of the work for the following year.
Oh, okay.
So let's, let's have discussion on that, however we work that out. But certainly, that's important.
Perfect. We can, we'll look at that grant funding. That'd be great.
Okay.
That sounds good.
Anything else?
I think, I think we covered, I think, yeah, I'm sorry about those.
That's okay. We can get those. And certainly, we'll have, you know, this discussion will go forward, not just ending today, but can reach out with any questions. We are a little behind.
Okay, sure. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your presentation this morning. Thank you for your huge work. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item six this morning on the agenda is an overview from Public Health on the Child and Teen Checkup Outreach Program. We have Kelsey, who's the program manager. Thank you.
Good morning. I am Kelsey Takoki. I'm the program manager for the Child and Teen Checkups Program. And we have Jane Newbauer with us. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure.
I'm Jane Newbauer.
Make sure your microphone's on. Thank you.
There you go.
Perfect, thank you. Yes, I'm Jane Newbauer, and I work with Partnership for Health. And I specifically work as our Dental Innovations Coordinator. So I'll let Kelsey do what she's going to do, and then I'll tell you a little bit more about it. Thank you.
Sounds good. So I wanted to take this time to highlight the Child and Teen Checkups Program. What it is, is it's a benefit of medical assistance for individuals under the age of 21 who are on medical assistance. And I am the program manager for the four-county area. But I'm here to represent Clay County today. The program, like I said, it's a benefit for free preventative healthcare. So individuals on medical assistance in the county can access their free checkups at the doctor. They can go in twice for dental checkups every year. They get free services for hearing, vision, and mental health. And our job in public health is the administrative services end. So we don't provide the medical services, but we help clients access their services. And we help connect them to clinics. And so our outreach staff connect with the families either through sending letters, through phone calls, through text messages, and occasionally in person to help them access the services that they need. And so in 2021, you know, our, we were, we were impacted by the pandemic and our rates did go down a little bit. But the way our program is evaluated is based on what's called a participation rate. And so that is the rate of individuals who access their preventative healthcare. And we were, Clay County was actually number eight. We were in the top 10 of participation rates in the state in 2021. So Clay County was number eight in their participation rate for how many children under the age, and young adults under the age of 20 on medical assistance who are accessing their preventive healthcare. So that is, is huge. There's over 100, over 100 counties and tribes who provide these services. And Clay County did a fantastic job. So I wanted to highlight a little bit of what our program did. And a big need for most of our clients is dental access. There are very long wait lists for dental clinics in the area. Our outreach staff are continuously asked for help finding services. And there's wonderful work that's being done in our region. And Jane is here to help explain the project that she's working on here.
Well, thank you, Kelsey. So as Kelsey said, my, my main job here today is to explain a little bit to you about the Partnership for Health Dental Innovations Project that was started, it was 2019, I believe, when Blue Cross Blue Shield approached Partnership for Health to help come up with an idea of how to address the, the needs for dental care here in this region. And in 2020, they contracted with me to provide services to help identify the resources that are out there, help to get that information into the hands of children and families and people who need the information, and then pull together community stakeholders to talk about how to address the shortages of dental care that we have. So this has been a long, long, ongoing process of, of need that's out there. And it's huge that Partnership for Health, that Clay, Becker, Ottertail, and Wilkins County have decided to come together to figure out how to address this problem in a systemic manner and working together. So, so that's pretty awesome. One of the biggest things that we are working on currently is expanding access to care through a new clinic that will be established in Becker County. And in expanding the services for you here in Clay County that are offered through Apple Tree Dental. So hopefully, you're all familiar with Apple Tree Dental, located in Holly. They are a fantastic organization. We are very fortunate to have a new clinic built in Fergus Falls as well. And so we added a new nonprofit clinic there that opened in 2010. And sadly enough, there are still hundreds, actually thousands of people that are on the waiting list for dental care here in Clay County. There were, at last count, there were about 1,400 people on Apple Tree's waiting list here at their Holly office. They currently are not accepting any new patients, nor have they been for, going on just about a year now. There's, there's a few different reasons. I heard you talk a little bit about staffing shortages for, for nurses. And likewise, we do have staffing shortages for dental professionals as well. And so in addition to just the long wait lists of clients that Apple Tree has, they have some staffing shortages that we're working to address that will help to, we're calling it a staffing solution, that will help to bring providers that are working in the public or private sector, rather. So your private dental offices versus your nonprofit ones, and bringing them on board to do some contract dentistry work. So we do currently also have family healthcare here in Morehead. However, I just found out last week that they too are no longer accepting any new patients. Again, that is in part due to some staffing shortages that are out there. You do have the Red River Dental Project that is specifically for pulling teeth. They're open twice a week. So if a person can't get in to see a dentist, their other alternative is they can pay $30 and they can go have the tooth pulled. They do have to pay $30 cash for that. There is no insurance reimbursement. And they're only allowed to do that twice a month, if you can believe that. So it's a real, it's a very real, there's a huge need and it's very real. We do have M State Community College here in Morehead, which is awesome. They do provide preventative services through their dental students. They do that a couple, few times a year. And there is another option where people can pay cash to have those preventative services done. And then they ask for reimbursement from their insurance companies. And then we do have eight mobile dental outreach clinics that are offered throughout the county. Specifically, we have Barnesville Schools, Morehead. We have two mobile clinics that come to the Morehead Schools. And then last year, we added Yulin School District that provides a mobile service to the kids that, that attend school there. And then there's two at the Family Service Center, and then Churches United and a First Lutheran Church. So again, those are not dental homes. Those are providers that come in and provide some care. And it's good care. It's just not a dental home for them. And it, it's not what families need. So, and sadly, with all of that, we still only have 34% of residents here in Clay County that are low-income that are accessing a dental provider in a year. So that, that really is the bottom line, that only 34% with all those things that we have in place are able to, to see a dentist. Our goal with this project is to increase that utilization rate to about 55%. Seems a little odd, doesn't it, that we're only shooting for barely over the 50% mark? But that is a statistic that has been imposed by legislation. But that is a statistic that has been imposed by legislation. State legislators have been looking at this issue very closely as well for the past few years and have determined that that is a level of threshold that they would like to see our health providers meet is to reach a 55% utilization rate. So our goal is to help make that come true. So right now, what the Northwest Minnesota Dental Access Project is, is expand, we're planning an expansion of the Apple Tree Clinic in Holly to include at least four more operatories. That would put them up to about 12 operatories, so about a third, they would be able to see a third more people. Again, I said we're working on building a new nonprofit clinic through Northern Dental Access in Detroit Lakes. So that is huge. Northern Dental Access has two current facilities, one in Bemidji and one in Halsted, Minnesota. So this would be a third site for them. They would, that would be 14 operatories. And then the third component of it is to add some sedation dentistry capacity too, which is also something that there's a huge need. So, any questions about who I am or what I do? And then the last piece that I have is, and this is the whole biggest reason I'm here to visit with you today, is we are presenting to all the county boards in the region, so Clay, Becker, Ottertail, and Wilken Counties, and then some five additional counties in the surrounding area of Becker County that will be impacted by this new, the new clinic and the expansion of Apple Tree. We are giving a request to all of the counties to potentially access some of the ARPA funds that may be available to help with the implementation of this process. And I do recognize that many counties have already allocated those dollars and that's just fine. We know they're being used in many, many good ways. I understand here in Clay County, you folks are building a substance abuse facility. And that's ideal, it's wonderful. And we also recognize that that is a regional program and project that will help many families, many of the same families, in fact, that we are also working with. And so, in fact, I was really excited to hear that you guys were investing in that sort of a structure because it's very similar to what we're looking for in infrastructure, in infrastructure funding, that it would help people with dental care access as well. So I do have a formal request that I will bring, or I brought, and I will leave with you folks today that you can take a look at. I can also email this to you. And again, I recognize that your funding may already be allocated, but if at some point you do have excess funding or, you know, are looking for other projects that would benefit your residents, this is certainly one of them that we'd like you to consider, so.
Well, thank you, Jane. We do have an ARPA committee member, or committee that kind of talks about these requests. So certainly, we, I believe, have a meeting scheduled for September where it can talk about it and understand that we all are facing huge needs, as you said. And you are doing such immense work with the different outreaches that you're addressing. So thank you both for your work there. I know there's no magic answer to reduce those enormous backlogs, but hopeful that addressing those waitlists a little at a time will certainly bring that down. I know with the staffing issue, and it's not just hygienists, but it's certainly dentists and all of that. But it's hard, I know.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I do appreciate that. Commissioner Kaylee?
Yeah, thanks for coming, both of you. Jane, I was wondering, our Early Childhood Initiative has a dental grant through West Central, I believe.
That is correct.
And they're going to be doing some work with Micah's Mission and Bright Sky, are you part of that?
Yes, actually, we are, thank you for bringing that up, yes. So I was able to connect them with Children's Dental Services. I do believe they will be starting outreach services there as well, probably within the next month or two. So, yeah, that's awesome. And you guys are doing wonderful work. And we, this partnership has been ideal because of West Central Initiative as well. It's just a nice addition to what was already happening with the work for kids. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, thank you so much.
Do you want me to leave these copy?
Yeah, that would be helpful, Steve can grab that.
Madam Chair, I just have one comment based on Kelsey's report. The reason why we are number eight in the state, which is just amazing, is because of the work Kelsey does and the work that Denise in, within Child and Teen Checkup Outreach. So it's based on the work in outreach to all of those that are in high need. So she's more humble than, doesn't report that it was really their work that allowed us to be number eight. So we're very proud of being that high in the state.
Thank you very much for the work. We are scheduled for a five-minute quick break. We will go ahead and take that and come back at 10:10. Back? Item nine this morning is a financial request from the FMWF Chamber of Commerce. We have President and CEO Shannon Full and staff with, good morning, guys.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Thanks, Commissioners, for allowing us the opportunity to be in front of you today. We are here to talk a little bit about two major topics that the Chamber is looking for partnership with, and that is our public policy work and our talent and workforce work. So as we go forward, many of you, I've been in front of the Commission a couple times with updates on progress that we've had specific to the Minnesota side of the river. As you know, our public-private partnerships are really critical to the success of this region. When we look at regions that are competitive all across the country, they're getting that success through public-private partnerships. As we represent almost 2,000 businesses in our region, really looking forward into how can we be a catalyst for growth and prosperity, but really looking at the business and community sector of this, promoting and protecting businesses, inspiring innovations, and then cultivating action so that we're able to move forward. We've really, since I came onboard two years ago, we've looked at a couple different things. One is really prioritizing the balance of being a border city, community, or border city region. And so a lot of focus on the Minnesota side of things. So here's some of that demonstrated today on how we're elevating our regional workforce strategies, our public policy infrastructure at the local, the state, and the national level, and then expanding our business services. We know for a fact that workforce and talent is the number one barrier. Our businesses are telling us over and over again that we need a comprehensive collective strategy to workforce. And then we're also gonna talk about, in order to do that, we need to have public policy that at the state level, the national level, and then here at the local level, that helps us to be very growth-minded and moving forward. And so I'm gonna turn the table over to two of my colleagues. So with me today, on my right is Jenna Mueller. She's the Executive Director of the Chamber Foundation. So we have instilled and brought forward, lifted up our Chamber Foundation. You probably all heard about recently, a $9.62 million grant from the Economic Development Administration. And that is for specific programming, but that programming actually will allow us to leverage any type of relationships and resources here locally and bring that to the next level. And then to my left, Catherine Grinberg, she's our executive director, or our, yeah, Executive Vice President, not the Executive Director, that's my role, but she might want that, Executive Vice President at the Chamber and the VP of Public Policy. So I'll turn it over to Jenna first.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning, thanks so much for having us. When we look at workforce and talent, I'm sure this is not a topic that is new to any of us in this room. It's something that we hear a lot. And so the past year, we've really been focusing our efforts on launching, developing, piloting, and providing capacity within several areas of acclimation, development and retention, diversity, equity, inclusion, and then our Ignite Initiative and platform, Ignite FMWF, which was launched last October. So our Ignite FMWF platform, we've been working really closely with the Morehead Career Academy, which is a really awesome asset to our region, and are starting to work into mapping along any of the career advancement, exploration, preparedness, and tools on that platform alongside Minnesota CTE career clusters that are available. Our Ignite Initiative really looks at creating relationships across sectors of businesses, nonprofits, and education to develop our future talent pipeline and then also our current talent pipeline in here. So we really want to retain or train and retain our population. So as we look forward to our next year, and so year two of the Ignite Platform, we're looking at expanding our local content. So all the videos that are available on Ignite that feature different careers and where to access training for those careers within the region are sourced locally as well as nationally. So we're really putting additional efforts on connecting with businesses in year two to make sure that our area businesses within Clay County are highlighted so that when students have access within the Morehead Public Schools and beyond as we expand throughout all of Clay County, they see individuals that they may know, they see corporations that they know, they see local businesses that they may know, and they're able to envision a life post-graduation, post-university, post any sort of training so that they retain and stay here within the area.
I might just add, the other piece of this that gets overlooked often with Ignite is that this is also being used by nonprofit organizations for existing job seekers or those that want to level up. So they wanna upscale if they're underutilized populations. So we're really focusing on some of those new American immigrant populations are recently released or formerly incarcerated, maybe our veteran population and any dislocated workers. So that's another piece that would be really critical, that all of these services will be provided for those as well.
When we look at acclamation, we understand that when you come into a community, you wanna stay in a community that welcomes you, that you feel comfortable in, that you're embedded in. And so that involves having relationships with other individuals, relationships with your community, and then also within your organization. And so we have spent the past year in looking at launching pilot, or piloting, developing piloting and launching our community welcome and acclamation program. So this is a multiple, or multi-tiered approach to making sure that our newest residents stay within the region. So our Community Champs Program, we are currently recruiting for, they will be featured on one of our website in which, when a person goes to a website, our Community Champ website, they'll be able to say people that look like them, that identify with them, activities, hobbies. So I might say, hey, I'm a community champ, I love junkyard brewing, I love dogs. And so somebody can reach out to me and ask where my favorite dog park is. They can ask me for a recommendation and I can connect with them directly. And other tiers, we're servicing our organizations within the region as they bring in talent within the area by providing pre-hire and post-hire community tours, welcoming experiences for our C-suite level individuals that connect them directly within the community and the individuals that they need to know in order to push our progression forward. And then also having welcoming packages, so different experiences that highlight the best of the region that we have here. And then currently, we've really placed a lot of our capacity in our Young Professionals Network. This network develops and retains individuals within the ages of 21 and 39 in the region through various professional development opportunities, networking, and community engagement. The intent is connect our YPs to each other, to the community, and then provide them with an experience that keeps them here within the region. Our longstanding leadership FMWF program develops and retains servant leaders in our community. This established program for over 30 years has a robust alumni network. And each year, each cohort is challenged with creating community change initiatives that sometimes they do develop into the next nonprofits that make change within the area. So this year's class launched Make Music, or FM Make Music Area Day, a brush-up campaign that's teaching students within Clay County how to properly take care of their teeth at a very young age, so ages four and five, that award them with a prize at the end of their time for all their brushing. So we're, those servant leaders are really impacting the community now and then also within the future. And then as we look towards our future talent in development and retention, so we're looking at our K through 14 and K through 12 community, one of the needs that our businesses have really put forth to us is help with internships. How do you distinguish the difference between high school internship and then also a college-level internship? And then creating robust experiences that either lead to employment of an intern or offboarding of an intern within the same industry within the community. And so we have been putting our time and effort in launching internship toolkits that will be based upon different industries and organizations within the region. And then our work-based learning opportunities through K through 12, in which we have been developing an internship and job shadow hub site on our Ignite Platform so that students are able to go to one location, access internships across the region from our regional employers, and there's direct connection there as our employers put those internships and job shadows opportunities there. And what this allows us to do is to have future talent pipelining to make sure that those students are experiencing the region, they can see themselves here, they stay here, they're adding to that eventual economic impact. And then also it deepens some connections across our workforce and then our businesses. And then when we look to our development and retention and our diversity, equity, inclusion initiatives, we have launched or relaunched our Professionals of Color Program, which creates inclusive opportunities in networking, community engagement, and then professional development. This was launched pre-COVID. We took a little bit of a break, as everybody did in the world during COVID, and really have put a lot of capacity in relaunching this in the past six to 10 months. Our Professionals of Colors are meeting in person now in the past two months there. And they also support our quarterly diversity, equity, inclusion training. And those volunteers organize our training. They tell us what businesses want to see, how they can be, interact and create more inclusive opportunities. And then we support them in those decision-makings and help provide those events.
So now we'll shift gears a little bit to the other cornerstone of work where we think there is a special opportunity for partnership with the county. And so I'll turn it over to Catherine for this discussion.
Awesome, thanks, Shannon, and thank you to the Commission. I'll be careful what I say about public policy because I have three legislators behind me.
I feel like this was a perfect, perfectly planned.
Yeah, who did this? Hopefully it's nodding up and down and not left and right for the three of you. No, really appreciate the partnership with our legislators and with all of you. Really have, I think, seen that that's strengthened over the last couple of years. So really wanna give kudos to all of you that have been a part of that and really appreciate the partnership and look forward to further partnership in the future here. So today, I'm just gonna go through a couple of the things that we've worked on in the past together and how we would like to work in the future together. And then I'll end with just a little bit of the proposed Commission involvement that we told you that we'd bring back to you upon your request. So starting with advocacy leadership, this is one large area that you know the Chamber is very committed to and have had partnerships with you in the past. Things like bringing the Deed Commissioner Grove to visit Morehead. Obviously, that was a joint partnership to bring him here. It wasn't the Chamber alone, it wasn't the city alone, it wasn't the Commission alone. It was all of us working together to really show him that we have a lot here in Morehead to show him and in all of Clay County. And so being able to bring him here, those kind of meetings are great to be able to have stakeholder conversations, bring businesses into the room, the city, the county. But even more importantly, I think it's important to note that really actionable things come out of these meetings. And so one good example is after that Commission meeting with Commissioner Grove here, Morehead Fargo MSA is now included on Deed's monthly jobs report. So we already knew that Clay County is, right, the fastest-growing county outside of the metro in Minnesota. But now the rest of the state and the rest of the country that looks at that job report knows. So that was a really big win, I would consider, for our county. And appreciate all of your participation in that meeting with Commissioner Grove and being able to demonstrate that. I think that's a win for all of us in the community. Otherwise, we also offer a lot of free and open-to-the-public policy events, educational materials, those kind of things that I think are really important for Clay County citizens to be able to see. We don't endorse candidates, so we're really, really trying to give the information to citizens to be able to make their own educated decision on what they would like to see. Couple examples of this, the Morehead Mayor and Council Candidate Forms that we've done in the past and we look forward to doing this session here as we go through the election cycle. And then also we demonstrated the importance of funding for the Dilworth Fire Station. This was another win that I would consider, though we were just, you know, talking to the legislators in the hallway, though it didn't get done this session, hopefully we'll be able to kind of lay the groundwork for the next session to be able to get some funding for that. But being able to take our production staff out to the Dilworth Fire Station and create a video to show what it really is that we're trying to fund, those kinds of things are really impactful, I think, for the county, for us, for the city. those kinds of things are really impactful, I think, for the county, for us, for the city, to be able to get some of those things done. And the educational piece for the citizens, the legislators, and beyond. And then lastly, something we're working in the future that we'd love your partnership on is we're working on business roundtables in Dilworth and then plan to do that in many of the other surrounding communities as well, just to be able to bring those businesses to the table too and say, how can we be more supportive? What are things we should consider at the legislature to be able to support? So we're looking forward to, we're right now in works with City of Dilworth to be able to put that together in partnership. And then, like I said, we'll be doing that with the other cities as well. So something that we'll ask for your involvement on at the last slide here.
And Catherine, I might follow up a piece to the discussion roundtable when Commissioner Grove was in town. Even though I'm not making decisions at the state level in terms of those policies, those discussions were really helpful for a majority of us that serve on planning commission levels, making sure that locally we are having sound policy that helps facilitate those pieces. And sometimes it's identifying a small component that could help make, make information sharing easier. And I would encourage us, I appreciate the piece in regards to the Dilworth roundtables, in whatever capacity we can help take part in that, those are really helpful discussions for us to take part in. So thank you for organizing those.
Oh, that's great to know.
Yeah, we also, we also realize that there is a significant amount of impact and opportunity in our rural, more rural parts of Clay County. So as we look at things that are happening in Holly, that are in Barnesville and in Dilworth, those are the areas that we'd like to reach out to them in their communities to find out, how can we provide assistance? So I think the biggest probably philosophical shift that you're seeing from the chamber now than before, we still have great chamber members that are the foundation to the work we do, but the impact and the influence that we have is far greater than membership. So this isn't about, are you a member and are you not a member? Are you a citizen, a business leader that actively wants to see growth in the community? And then how do we partner with you to do that?
Then turning to one of the ways that a couple of you were involved as well and really appreciated your participation in this, all of you, was to be able to send a couple of the commissioners to the Morehead Area Day at the Capitol. This was our first annual one, and I know you've heard a lot about it from the commissioners that were there. So I won't go on too much about how awesome it was. But really, I want to highlight that, again, just like when we brought Commissioner Grove here, we had some of those same really important conversations with some really impressive leadership at the state level also. So we met with the majority and minority leaders, along with appropriations, workforce committee leadership, and we met with all three of our legislators there, which was great to be able to connect with them out in St. Paul and be able to kind of get a pulse on what was happening, how we can be helpful. So you'll see some of the pictures from the day there. Also to note that we had with us two mayors, so we had both Dilworth and Morehead there, county representatives, and business leaders. The reason I wanted to call that out is because it is really important, and you all know this, but it is really important to bring everyone together like that to St. Paul and be able to show that unity and collaboration among a community. I think it speaks volumes to what we're doing. And when we have asks from our community, to be able to say that, really, the business, the local government, the nonprofits, everyone's on board and at the same table working together. So I think that that speaks volumes. And the legislators can probably speak better to that piece, but I really wanted to call that out, that we did really intentionally bring together local government, the county government, as well as business leaders to the table. And our goal for this next year, we'd really like to have participation, again, from the county and be able to have the second annual one even larger, add more businesses, more county representatives, more cities, even outside of Morehead and Dilworth, like we just talked about, engaging more cities. So that's the goal for this upcoming year for our Morehead Area Day at the Capitol. And then lastly, I'll just talk about public policy committee. We talked a little bit about this at the last commission we were meeting we were at with you all. But this is really the leadership that is convening legislators, convening policy ideas, business leaders, all in the same room to be able to strategize and make sure that we have a cohesive plan moving forward. So you'll see some of the policy topics that that committee plans to work on in the upcoming year and that you'll see reflected from the chambers, all the important things that we've talked about again and again of childcare, workforce, infrastructure, you know, Dilworth Fire Station again, career academy funding, those sorts of really important things. So that will be upcoming for the policy committee. And then finally, what I'll end with here is just a couple of ways that we would really like to see the commission involved. Aside from the financial request, wanted to bring forward a few ideas as you had asked us to come back with ideas. Really would like to see a county commission business liaison to serve on the public policy committee, so to be able to be engaged in those conversations monthly, if possible, representing the voice of Clay County citizens and be able to bring back to this board what's going on there and we can have better communication through that way. Also, would welcome involvement, again, for the Morehead Area Day at the Capitol. I think that this, you know, we've talked about how this serves the citizens, being able to have your partnership at the table. And then finally, would like to see either that same liaison or another business liaison be able to be engaged in those business roundtables that we do and be an active participant at that table in the multiple cities that we'll do those in.
So finally, we'll just close by saying thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to be in front of you today. Thank you for the partnership you've already had with us. We fully realize that budgets are tight and, and we know that there's a challenge for resources. We face that same challenge, but want to continue to have high-quality programming, high-quality content, and really make a significant impact and influence in our region. And we can't do that without partnership, partnership from the public sector. So we look forward to that opportunity to work alongside you again in the future. We also really know that when we put a budget request in front of you, that is really where we wanted to be in an ideal situation. But we also fully support anything that you believe is the appropriate amount to be at the table and to partner with us. So we welcome any questions that you may have for any of the, any of the three of us.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation. Certainly, based on discussions that we've had in the past, you've, you've taken our suggestions and certainly ran with them. I, I will say that I really do appreciate the extra presence in regards to advocating for Minnesota side issues. And that, that's locally, that's at the state. Certainly making sure that we're connected in with the conversations as it takes such a team approach to address the myriad of issues that we're all facing. And I will also say that the Ignite job page has really expanded to an enormous level. And that's exciting, as we are all in such a crazy time in regards to addressing workforce challenges, to have a single space, as you've created, for job seekers to go out and see all of the different opportunities, I think is really an asset. So thank you so much for that. But certainly, if the board has any other questions, we can address them. Yes, Commissioner Ebinger?
Just a quick observation. Commissioner Kaylee and I were at the Morehead Area Legislative Meeting this last time. And not my first rodeo. I've been up there with the Chiefs Association. I was in my prior employment with the, I worked in a capital city and with the legislature on a regular basis. I've never seen the preparation done to the level that was done for our group. We came in there, we had the issues identified, we had the talking points identified, we had access to leadership within the legislature. We met the right people and we had the right people that came in from our businesses and from our, our local government. Just phenomenal. And I really encourage us to remain committed to that. We're going to need legislative help now more than ever, and I think this is a good opportunity for us on that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Kaylee? Yeah, I know this was just a real high-level overview of a whole bunch of things, but what I saw is that there is real fruit being born on your efforts in a lot of these areas. And, and I would say, yeah, the last two years in particular, the work has just really blossomed. And I want to thank you for your, your constant advocacy for our area. And I look forward to working with you more down the road.
Well, thank you for the discussion. I know that I've, as I am in State Fair craziness prep week, I do apologize for not creating a space to meet with you one-on-one before this, but certainly we'll follow back up with you because it is such a tremendous work. But certainly, as you recall, the board now will weigh the requests. And as we march forward towards a final budget, we'll probably reach out with any additional questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, well, the next item on our agenda is our legislative update. We do have Senator Kent Eakin with us, Representative Heather Keeler, and Representative Paul Markwart. And huge thank you to you for creating a time to come and have continued dialogue with us in this space. But you, all three, are so open and available all times of the year. I know that I've reached out to you personally in many different capacities over the last year. And it's bittersweet as you, both, two of you are creating a retirement space to do the work with your families. But thank you for coming to our board this morning. So who wants to pitch it? Senator? Make sure it's green and then it's.
It's got to be green. There we go. So, yeah, well, thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Appreciate the invitation to be here today. And kind of a bittersweet time because it's for Representative Markwart and myself, last time that we'll probably be addressing you in our official capacities as state legislators. And I just want to let you know what an honor and a privilege it's been to represent you all these years. I've felt very fortunate, and I know Representative Markwart feels the same way, very fortunate to have represented this area of Minnesota because our constituents are so good to work with. And regardless of political party, people work together. And I think that that is one of the reasons that Morehead and Clay County and this area of the state has been so successful is because of that partnership that we've developed here. And, and it's, it's really been a teamwork effort, and I couldn't ask for a better team, including those of you serving Clay County so well here as commissioners. So again, thank you for your work and I look forward to continuing to work with you in the future. I was just talking to Commissioner Campbell about, you know, feel free to contact us anytime as far as consulting and helping out because we're still residents of this great part of the state and want to continue to see it flourish and do well. As far as this last legislative session, I do have to say I was rather disappointed in the outcome, generally because we still have a lot of money that's just laying on the table that was not appropriated. I think politics came into play. There's a, I guess, a motivation kind of pushed things off until after the election, which I think is unfortunate because so much is needed right now, especially after having gone through the pandemic. There's a lot of needs out there and a lot of, a lot of folks that are struggling. And I, there were some accomplishments that I think were significant during this session that we can't forget as well, one of which was taking care of the unemployment insurance debt that we had and not making our businesses bear the brunt of that burden. It would have been a significant tax increase on our businesses who had already been hit so hard by the pandemic. And it was not for any fault of their own. The unemployment costs obviously shot through the roof because of the pandemic, had nothing to do with the businesses, so they should not be asked to bear that burden. This was a natural catastrophe, and we always come to the aid of those who were hit hardest by natural catastrophes. So, so I felt good about that. And the point that you guys were down the day that it was passed, the unemployment insurance plan for the Morehead days, I think not just a coincidence. And I do think you were very effective. As you were saying, Commissioner Ebinger is very well organized and had everything, I think the messaging was very effective. And that's so important, and especially for our area of the state, we need to make sure that the folks in the legislature and then state government don't forget about the unique situation we face here, being on the border with North Dakota in particular. And those issues need to be a constant present, presence during these, these very important negotiations. We saw that play out in terms of the law enforcement reform, for instance, that passed and created some difficulties for us in, in this area that others were not experiencing. So we need to, we need to be constantly vigilant in that regard. And then along with the unemployment insurance package that was passed, it included also frontline worker pay, which I think was critically important too, in recognizing those who were on the front lines during this pandemic. So those were a couple of things. Also, significant funding for border-to-border broadband, the most significant investment that we've ever made in border-to-border broadband. And again, the pandemic made it more clear how important high, access to high-speed internet services are for our communities and their success. And we can't ever forget that, that it's no longer a luxury, it is a need. So there was that. There was drought relief for our farmers. I thought it took longer than it should have to get passed, but we did get the drought relief passed. Also included some funding to get out ahead of future possible disasters like avian flu. So those are some of the things that we did accomplish during this session, but a lot still needs to be done. We should have gotten a bonding bill done this year. This was a bonding year after all. I'm, I'm optimistic that there will be a bonding bill next year that will be similar to many of the proposals that are being made so we can get things done, you know, you know, like, like the projects, the flood mitigation projects, the funding for the fire hall in Dilworth, and many other, the, the funding for M State, or for Minnesota State University as well. So again, a lot needs to be done. And I'm hopeful that we can, here in Minnesota, hopefully, get back to the tradition of bipartisan work being done. I know when you came down to the Capitol, I think I probably told you, showed you all the artifact that I'm most impressed with at the Capitol. It sits at the base of the grand staircase, which is an old flagpole that was carried by the first Minnesota regiment at the Battle of Gettysburg during the Civil War. And that was broken in two in that battle. But the, the Union won. Minnesota played a critically important role in turning the tide of that battle, which was the turning point of the Civil War. And one of the things that we were fighting for, of course, was to bring the country back together again, as well as fighting for, as Lincoln put it, "a new birth of freedom." But we were also fighting to reunite this country, and I think we need to do that again. So it serves as a good reminder because what they did with the flagpole when it was broken in two was they took the bottom part of the Confederate flagpole, which they had captured, and they secured that to the top part of the Union flagpole and continued to carry that into subsequent battles during that war. So that was always a reminder, when I'd walk up to the Senate chambers and walk past that artifact, I thought it was a good reminder for one of the, one of the things that we should be fighting for in the legislature is to keep our state and our country working together as one. And that's going to, that's going to lead to great success for us and our children's future. So again, I want to thank you so much for, for the opportunity you've given me. And I look forward to working with you and visiting with you in the future.
Thank you. Representative Markwart?
Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair and members of the commission. It's an honor to be here. Thank you for the invite. And, you know, once a senator gets done speaking, there isn't much left to be said. But, you know, we are in some really strange economic times. Minnesota unemployment rate is 1.8%. Not just the lowest in state history, but the lowest ever by any state in the nation since the Bureau of Labor Statistics have kept track of this since 1976. And, and yet, you look at, you know, and if you want a job today, it's out there. There's about two and a half job vacancies in Minnesota to every one unemployed person. And just in contrast to that, if you look back in like '09 and '10 when we were in recession, it was nine workers per every job vacancy. Now we got two and a half job vacancies to every worker. And that's, you, you talk about any area, law enforcement, teaching, nursing homes, wherever, workforce shortage is huge. And so that is certainly something we have to address. And, you know, we're still in COVID, but quite frankly, you know, we're looking at a $12 billion budget surplus in the next three years. Businesses, for the most part, are doing very, very well as we rebound from COVID. The economy's actually come back much stronger and quicker than other states. But we do have an inflation, you know? You got the prices that are rising, and yet, you look at all these statistics, and yet, the average person is seeing these increase in costs. And that's why it was so important and why I'm disappointed we didn't get this budget completed this year. You know, the agreement that was made with Governor Walz, the Senate Majority Leader, and the Speaker of the House, in the next three years, we basically had $12 billion of surplus. And $4 billion would go into a tax cut. $4 billion would go into. would go into spending, which included $1 billion for sure that had to go into education, $1 billion to higher ed, and $350 million to public safety, to law enforcement. That was there, over $100 million a year that would have gone out to cities and counties. And then $4 billion was left on the bottom line. And actually, we did get the tax bill done. That part did get done. And I'm not going to go through everything, but there was $30 million for county program aid. The Ag to School credit would have been raised from 70% credit to 85%, which I know is crucial to area schools and farmers around here. And about a 7% cut to our income taxes, about $1 billion a year permanent. So it's significant. And that's why we could have, we could have used that now to help with the inflation, but also to help lower taxes and provide some really important investment. But hopefully, we can do that next year. And like the senator has said, and by the way, I was talking to HR, and we're actually in until they take the oath. So we're in until like January 2nd or 3rd, actually. Yeah, so we've got a-
We'll be calling on you.
-few more days of even in the next year. So, but even after that, as he said, I mean, you know, whatever we can do to get some of these things through. And the last thing I'll talk about, I guess, as far as kind of the legislative session, and the chamber was just here, but I really want to thank all of you. You know, when we talk about workforce shortage, that Morehead Community Career Workforce Academy that we were talking about, and everyone really was involved with this, we had in that tax bill $6 million for that. And that is the key, because it's a way in which you can make sure that it creates a pipeline for all of our students, starting in high school, where this pipeline for high-demand, high-wage jobs that are needed right now. And that is something that Brandon Lunick, the superintendent of schools there, and all of you were involved, and the chamber was involved, you know, coming together with one plan, one plan to address workforce shortages, bring everyone together rather than have everyone doing a separate thing. I think the model is the way to go. And I'm hoping we can get something done next year. And I certainly will be trying to be involved with that. So that's going to be a key. Finally, just a big thank you. Thank you to the constituents of Clay County. I've served all our parts of Clay County for 22 years. By far, the most enjoyable thing I did as a legislator was going door-to-door and meeting with folks, and I will truly miss that. It was an honor to serve for those 22 years. I also want to thank all of you. Clay County has strong leadership, and the proof is in the pudding. You look at the population, the census. Clay County went up 10.8 percent, 6,300 new residents in Clay County in the last decade, one of the fastest-growing counties in all of Minnesota. That doesn't happen by accident. And so I want to thank all of you. And, you know, when you had projects that you brought before us, the local option sales tax for the correction, the jail, if you will, and the solid waste facility, you made it easy for us legislators. You had all of your ducks in a row, and you had everything planned, and Senator Ekin and I just had to kind of throw in bills and go from there. You made it easy. Clay County residents are well-served by what is happening in Clay County here in the leadership that you're providing. And you're, you know, sometimes people say, well, you know, we're competing with the border, and they'll talk about the disparity. Fargo-Morehead is all one community. And, you know, you look at, again, just back to the population, you know, Morehead, even if you take away the annexation of Oakport, increased its population last decade by 14%. Dilworth's 14 and 1/2 percent. Barnesville-Hawley, 7 and 1/2 percent growth. This county is thriving. It's a great place to live and raise a family and work. And that's a testament to the leadership here and a testament to the citizens of this county. And, you know, I will tell you, you know, the diversion project is one example. And early on, I was not a big supporter. Commissioner Campbell and I had disagreements. We actually, let's say, butted heads on that. That's why I've got a little less hair here. But I will tell you what, the adjustments that were made to that project, and Commissioner Campbell, you were a leader in doing that, has made it a project that is going to be very strong and is going to really benefit our communities into the future. And so I want to thank you for that and for where we're at with that. And it shows that even though you can disagree at times, you can come and make it a better thing in the end. And I think, as Senator Ekin mentioned, we need to compromise a lot more in the legislature and on the federal level. The one thing I see is we're moving, you know, too far away from each other. And our constitution was based on compromise. We wouldn't have a nation without compromise. And compromise and sticking up to your values and compromising, that's strength, not weakness. And so, again, it's been an honor to serve this wonderful county and this part of the state for 22 years. We'll stay in contact if I can be of any help in any other way. I'd certainly would like to. Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Representative Markort. Representative Keeler, good morning. Okay, but how do you really go after two retiring legislators? Right? I should have gone first. Madam Chair and Commissioners, thank you. To my colleagues, thank you. I said, when Paul announced his retirement, I was like, ooh, jeez, that's tough. And then Kent announced his, I was like, oh, my goodness, that's a big, those are big shoes to fill. Having historical knowledge and historical relationships in this community has served us extremely well. Having Representative Markort as our tax chair for the state left our community at the leadership table in all these conversations, and that makes a huge difference. And so the little things that I think you all don't see was their desire to continue to show up, to be a voice for this area, and the uniqueness and the beautiness and the beauty that we all bring to the state. We are growing rather quickly. One of the things outside, to kind of hit on some of the areas, I guess, everything they said, and with the UI package being combined with frontline workers, I found that a massive disappointment. The way that that funding ended up was 10 to 1, 10 being towards our businesses, 1 being towards our workers. But in our community, that was a massive overlook. We said over and over and over, the frontline workers' package doesn't work for our community because we have Minnesotans who live in Minnesota, work in North Dakota to serve Minnesota families. And we said that over and over and over, that our community is going to have to pick winners and losers in this situation. And to me, we should never have to do that. When we talk about a border city community, we know, and we talk about it in our flood mitigation, that it's important for us to have access to Fargo because they are healthcare industry. They are where we go for a lot of our services. So I think the one thing that we took away or that I took away learning is being a really strong, bold voice at the table to just continue to say, that's not going to work for us. You have my commitment that as long as I sit in this table, I'll do that, because I've seen leaders do that before. Also, the investment in higher education. I served on higher ed. I would really like to see that move towards more of a college and career readiness foundation. It's not, higher education isn't for everybody. We talk a lot about all these other needs. We know that we're looking at career, and we need more opportunities within our labor industries. Those are things that kids can get out and get trained in and get working. We see all the growth that's happening. You know, are we making sure that our kids have access to that? When we talk about flood mitigation, you know, the jobs that that could bring to our area, and making sure, you said it earlier, making sure that people want to move here, because nobody wants to build a business in a potential flood, flood zone. So the nice thing about walking away, okay, trying to find the nice part of walking away from massive opportunities, is we've done the work. And so what I've said to you is that in this time before we go back, we have the footprint of what we want to get done. We take some adjustments and some tweaks, and we go back really strong in January to be a voice at the table for these changes. Some of the areas, you know, that we did get through this year that I think it overlooked a lot, you know, was the broadband. We noticed that, and we've been saying that. When they made the statement on March 13th, or 14th, or 15th, whatever of those three days you got your announcements, like, just go home and do what you're going to do. Our students had the massive impact. A lot of them went back to greater Minnesota, didn't have access to broadband, and we invested in that. And so hopefully, you know, those are the things that people will continue to grow, have opportunity in education and business. But the one thing that I'm actually the most proud of, and it's small, but I am a daughter of a veteran. I'm a daughter, I'm a granddaughter, I'm a niece of seven generations of veterans. So anybody who has served continues to serve or will serve. Thank you for your service and time. But we invested money into the Fisher House. And I don't know if you guys are familiar with what that is. The Fisher House is similar to the Ronald McDonald House. And so when we have vets, because we know that our Fargo VA actually serves five of our counties within this region, people are driving two hours one way just for a medical appointment. I watched my dad do this as he was fighting his cancer battle, driving three and a half hours one way just for treatment. And so what the Fisher House is going to do is going to provide a place for families to stay. So if they're traveling from the farthest corner of Clay County, and we know that sometimes those treatments are not, they really wreck your body. You need time to rest. You need a place to be safe and sleep before you maybe drive home. And so for me, that was one of the biggest takeaways that we actually did put money into, were partnering in that, knowing and understanding, it was hard to get money allocated to another state. And that's, I think, one of those things that continues to be a conversation. But again, as a daughter of a veteran, and knowing how important service members are for our community, I take a lot of pride in that we were able to at least get that funding out the door, and that project is starting. I continue to look forward to working with all of you. I say, you know, being elected and starting in the middle of a pandemic, it took me like three months just to figure out where the bathrooms were, let alone the relationships that really mattered with leaderships at the table. So now when we have these bigger conversations, I have a pretty healthy roadmap on where we need to go to address them. I know, simple things that didn't come out as bills, but where these behind-the-scenes conversations was our lack of support with our New American community as we were trying to figure out how to get information in their language and reach them where they were when it came to the needs for vaccines. And so just making sure that we continue to be at the table to have those really powerful conversations. Thank you for all of your work and your advocacy. Thank you for challenging me, but also having grace as I learn a really complicated job during a really difficult time. Pila May, thank you.
Thank you. Well, certainly, I probably know better than most that your positions are positions that when you leave St. Paul, the work doesn't stop. In many ways, it just gets started, and you're having the difficult conversations, and you're meeting with the people and hearing the stories of how hard certain situations have affected certain folks. And I know that it's a very tasking job, but one that you really have taken head-on, and you're so passionate in how you advocate for the people that live in the districts that you serve. So thank you so much for the work that you've done, for the work that you will continue to do, and the conversations that you're willing to have. Certainly, Paul and Kent, I consider you both friends. It didn't matter what letters were behind your position. People in our community knew that you would fight for them no matter what party they were affiliated with. So thank you so much for your work through all the years. Certainly, I'll open it up to any member of the board.
Thank you. I'm going to start with you, Mr. Markort. So we butted heads, and you may have lost a few hairs over that. My hair got grayer because of it. But I, you know what, this goes back and to Kent and to Paul, the work even goes back to that there was another flood project that was done early on that I worked on. That was the Oakport Flood Mitigation Project. That was instrumental. And I remember when the federal government came back and said, this doesn't meet their criteria. And I remember being interviewed by somebody from Channel 11 on Wall Street, and they said, well, what are you going to do now? And I said, the right thing is going to happen. It's going to get done. And the state of Minnesota recognized that, and they helped out to get it done. And even though Paul, we butted heads, we did it with respect, certainly did it with respect. And we both had different visions of it, but ultimately, we came to agreements on what is right for the people. And so thank you for that. I'm, I go back, Paul and I go back when he was mayor of Dilworth, and I was on the Oakport Town Board. And Paul and I were kind of the ones who were pretty much the ones who did the budget for the fire department because the township helped pay for that. And that was a, those were always good times. So thank you, Paul. I want to just talk briefly about the speed of government, and we, there was a little bit of discussion about now. Fortunately, well, I want to talk about the transfer station as an example. We, for a number of years, had this plan in place. And at the time when we first came to the state of Minnesota on it, the price tag on that was $12 million or thereabouts. And we were looking for some assistance from the state of, you know, I think our original request was $8 million or something like that. And, you know, certainly you, both of you, and I think, well, Heather, I think towards the end, you might have been involved with that too in terms of the final funding. But the point being is, we spent a number of years knowing the need for that project, but we felt the importance of having the partnership with the state and the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, who did support our project. But the time period that we had to wait to actually get those funds, our project has gone from $12 million to $21 million. And so when you weigh that in comparison to the $7.5 million that we, that we got invested, and part of that, and this goes to my, and maybe this is something that Heather can take forward for Clay County, is that, and we did talk a little bit about when we were there for Capitol Days, is the fact that due to the pandemic, some of these cost issues have arisen. And, you know, and I know you both heard that even MPC A went to the state legislature and said, well, you know, Clay County really needs some additional help on this because of these costs. And I think the number that even MPC A brought forward was $3 million additional dollars. You know, and those types of things, when you recognize the importance of a project, the sooner that can be done, the better it is. But, you know, that transfer station probably took us seven years longer than it should have to get done. Just a little bit of insight to the future. But, and again, and to Kent, you know, we've worked together for a lot of years as well, and you've done awesome things for Clay County. We talked a little bit before. I'm hoping that we, as a board, will still have access to your knowledge and your resources and ability to offer advice on how we can accomplish the things that are necessary and needed in Clay County. That really is the responsibility of the state to help us with. And you know what I'm talking about. There's an awful lot of things that, you know, you hear the unfunded mandates. Paul, you've heard about it a lot as tax commissioner. But there's a lot of things that fall down on the counties, and it seems like that grows instead of going the other way. And so the, having you two as a resource for us to help accomplish or go about how we can accomplish those things are great. And I, and thank you to all of you for the work you've done.
Yes, Commissioner Gross?
Yeah, I just want to officially thank Paul for getting me started in all this stuff here, by lying to me. There's only two meetings a month, he says, is all it's going to take. You know, but it's been a great career. He got me going on city council, and Paul's been a friend of the family for a long time now. And I just appreciate all that you've done for the county and stuff, getting to know Ken, and I haven't had much contact with Heather yet, but just getting to know you guys, it's just been wonderful what you've done for the county, and appreciate what you've done. Thank you.
Commissioner Kaylee? Thank you. All three of you have been really great about making sure you return a phone call, an email. Senator Ekin and Representative Markort, both of you have just called me out of the blue to follow up on something that I had asked about a month previously. And I just really appreciate that. Anytime that I've talked to you, I know that you've taken notes and that you've looked into it. You've had conversations. You're really going to be messed, you two. I did have a question about the frontline worker pay and how that ended up shaping out. My understanding is that family childcare providers did not qualify for the frontline worker pay, even though childcare was one of those first groups that was really identified as needing to benefit from that. I'm wondering if you think there'll be any movement in this next session to address that and maybe right that wrong to those folks.
Well, I certainly think there should be, and I think there will be efforts to try to address that. Well, I think really, obviously, that they should have been near the top in terms of access to that frontline worker pay. So I think that needs to be addressed as well as- as well as, you know, people who worked in Fargo but lived in Minnesota in healthcare, for instance, have been contacted by a number of those who didn't qualify because they were working for an institution outside of the state, still providing the same services for people from Minnesota and North Dakota, but not qualifying for that frontline worker pay. That's another issue that I think there will be efforts to try to readdress that and to open up access. We certainly have the resources to do it. We're sitting on, you know, over $9 billion surplus right now. And that money's going to be accessible for the next legislative session. So I think that there's good prospects for having those individuals brought into the frontline worker pay once the next session starts. But we've all been pushing for a special session, Representative Keeler, Markort, myself, to do those things now. Although I think the closer we get to the election, the less and less likely that becomes. I don't think it's likely that we'll see a special this year. So it would have to wait until January when Representative Markort and I won't be there, but we'll certainly be rooting from the sidelines to accomplish those things.
Yeah, Commissioner Kaylee, what the senator said, I mean, they started from scratch to try to put all this together. And needless to say, some major things were missed. So nothing's going to happen, right? You know, they've already gone through the vetting process. And I think about a million people will qualify, which will be about $500 out of that 500, $500 apiece. And, you know, I, so I don't know what's, I don't see anything happening yet this year, but next year, potentially, they could do something. I did want to add to that, you know, one thing would be important to meet in November after the election. We're still your legislators, but we could talk, at that point, you'll know what the political landscape is and kind of the strategy and so forth. And I think that would be a good time to get together again is after the November election. So get the three of us and whoever else.
I would agree with that. One to the statement, the frontline workers, we missed a lot of people. I mean, a lot of people put their life on the line to go to work, to provide us services so we could continue to work. I don't think that that is something we should continue to look at and do different. As far as daycare goes, I will say, this is a conversation that happens at a lot of the tables that we sit at, whether it's higher education, whether it's economic, whether it's mental health. I mean, education, you name it. Like, you can't do anything in your community if you don't have a strong base that supports daycare and our childcare providers. We hear that. You know, the interesting part is we have more women serving in the state legislature than ever before, which means that we have more moms in those spaces. I'm a mom. I'm a licensed equal mom. And I know that daycare and the access to daycare, you know, there's kind of always that running joke, like, you have to find a daycare the minute you pee on a stick. That means nine months in advance, eight months in advance. You know, people are really struggling. And we know that our family sizes are reducing. We know that, you know, the future of our community is at play when we don't address what our daycares are doing. So I do know that there are a lot of people that are committed to addressing it. I know that a lot of the new people that are trying to come to the tables, these are like top priorities. They're not fourth, fifth, sixth options anymore. We know that our businesses cannot thrive if we don't have a strong foundation for daycare. And we know that as a border community, right, it's one of the things that we struggle with when you're up against competition right across the bridge. So we'll continue to do the best work that we can. As far as having a meeting in November, I love that because, you know, the day that y'all came or that the chamber came was like one of the most chaotic times. Like, I mean, we were on the floor. We were sleeping maybe one to two hours a night. The one thing I learned in my first term is when and how and who you approach within the session and the cycle of the two-year term. Because there are really valuable things that happen early in session, when committees are happening, when it makes a difference on what ends up in omnibus packages. And, you know, prior to me coming into the seat, I had no clue. You know, we get a ton of messages and these, like, please vote for this House file in end of April, early May. And sometimes it's a little bit too late. And so, I mean, I'd love the opportunity to learn how, when, and who, you know, we can spend our time effective and efficiently so that we're making the biggest impacts that we can in those movement spaces rather than waiting till the very end when it gets a little bit harder to really advocate and push for that. Also, one of the things that I want to present back to you is that myself and working with members across the aisle, because access and like we're addressing broadband, the state legislature has always been a forced-in-person job. And I think that that's important. I think it's meaningful that we're there in person. And I know the power of that. But what we did is we created a task force. One thing we learned in COVID is that virtual options are an option and should continue to stay an option, especially for communities and counties like ours. It's a three-hour drive one way just to get to the Capitol, well, three and a half, four, maybe. I was going to say, okay, four hours, driving safely, following all of the, but, okay, but it's four hours out of your day one way for a five-minute conversation at a hearing. And so we put together a task force. We know 72% of members, stakeholders, and staff would like at least our committee hearings to have a hybrid option. I feel that that's important because we get overlooked, you know, flood mitigation gets overlooked because we're not there all the time at some of those conversations. And so trying to make a path, not only in the policy that we changes, but in our opportunity to be involved in government moving forward so that our teachers can be heard, our daycare workers can be heard, y'all can be heard without taking eight to nine hours of your day, driving one way and coming back. So any support that you could provide to make sure that we can continue to have our community voices at the table would be really powerful and helpful. Thank you.
I do know, based on some of the different commissioners from other rural counties that we serve with, there are counties that are making tough decisions in terms of how their commissioners take part in committee meetings. For instance, there, because gas is expensive to reimburse and it's such a budget buster, a lot of these smaller counties are encouraging their commissioners to participate virtually. And that needs to be an asset, not something that they're dinged on because they're not in person. And I personally feel like I've been able to testify in more capacity this year because of the flexibility to where we had been down there. But sometimes something comes up. And to take a morning to testify on some of these bills, it is something that I think greater Minnesota would benefit from, certainly, in terms of advocating. I do know Commissioner Ebinger had his hand up earlier.
Nothing elaborate. I just want to express my gratitude to Kent and Paul. You know, you guys came, Paul, you were here before I showed up. But Kent, you came about the same time I started. And there's been a lot of water under the bridge in what my role is. And what I'm doing is very different from what I started at. And you guys have been consistent supporters for anything local here that we've needed. And one of the things I love about this area is there's so many things that never should have happened at work, the diversion. And I've had long talks with the early crew here. That never should have happened. There were too many obstacles. There were too many problems and things that were wasn't going to happen. It happened. I can remember trying to figure out with the law enforcement center falling down around our ears and the state threatening to close down our jail. And the only funding source that we had was the sales tax, and it was never going to happen. It's just that that can't happen. You guys and this community support those things, and they happen. We got an underpass now. We're going to get another underpass. And I've heard that when we've discussed, why don't they build an underpass? Oh, that's never going to happen. The reality of it is, if we commit to something and we've got leaders like you, it's going to happen. And that's a good example for Heather. We can make things happen that the rest of the area thinks never is going to hap, is never going to happen. And I look at the next 20 years or so, I'll probably be watching from the home somewhere, but this community is going to blow up. Once the diversion's in, people are going to locate here. And we've got to be ready for it. And that means including parts of this Clay County that maybe you felt left out on the Fargo-Moorhead moniker. But you've got Barnesville, Holly, Glendon, Dilworth, all of them are going to benefit in the growth. And you've set a good standard. You've set the bar well for what people around here have the right to expect from their leaders. So thank you.
I think Commissioner Campbell has a comment, and then we'll, you've been incredibly gracious through your time.
I just want to address one thing, and it goes to Heather, something that you said. And I, and it has to do with remote work. And there's a lot of good things that have come from remote work. And Commissioner Mojo's expressed some of those positive things that have happened from that. One of the pieces of legislation that I've been a little bit frustrated with was, once the end of the pandemic came, about commissioners being able to partake in county board meetings, that they have to be here. I, for one, am one that have never taken advantage. I don't, I think the only time I've ever missed a county board meeting has been because of health or I was away on county business. This particular September, September 20th, I'm going to be gone on a vacation. And I would love to be able to call in and represent my constituents at that meeting. But because I'm on vacation, under the current rules, I'm not allowed to do that. And I really have issues with that.
So I think, just to follow up, after the end of the pandemic, there was a rule that you could only miss twice for a medical COVID excuse, to be excused. But after that, it was not allowed. And I think that's what Commissioner.
Yeah. So, you know, so I'm, you know, and we're in the process of having to have our preliminary levies set by the end of September. And one of the key meetings is going to be on the 20th. And I'm not going to apologize for finally taking a vacation and going to Arizona. I'm not going to apologize for that. But at the same point in time, I'd be willing to be while I'm down in Arizona on my vacation, to call in here to have those conversations. What's interesting is the citizens can call in and, you know, express a comment or opinion, but a county commissioner cannot. And I just, you know, I know, and I can maybe understand that it might be to avoid somebody who gets an elected position. I think theoretically, I, as an elected person, I have to show up once, and I still get my pay for the whole year. You know, I think it's to avoid abuse, maybe, of somebody who is just never coming to the meetings. But, you know, most of us in these elected positions, we're, that's not what we do or what we want to do. We want to be here to represent. And I, just something to be looking at in the future, because I think that was a mistake.
I would love to work with you on that because I think that we forget, we're all community members. We're serving in this capacity because we are community members. We're humans. We live in a world that we need vacations to take care of a foundation to continue to do this work. I think hybrid options is why, like, I like that. You know, maybe we can, we'll talk more about it in depth.
And again, I think, you know, we get our advice from our attorney's office too. And when we're told, no, you can't call in, you know, based on the regulations, I, whoa! You know, so any vote that goes on or motions that are made, my district has got no say in that.
And I think to clarify, we're not saying that, you know, I understand that you need to state your location at a time. And so we're not saying there's a problem there. It's just, once you reach that threshold, if you've done it twice, then you're not allowed to do it.
But that's only for medical reasons.
So certainly. Okay. Well, Commissioner, Representative Keeler, I know there's been incredible accolades for your colleagues, but certainly thank you for continuing the work. I think the title that you and I hold as Spud Mom is probably during this time of year, probably our most important piece. But I will say, I have lobbied her for Clay County Needs during a track meet or two. So thank you for being present in the community as well. But thank you so much for coming today. Our last item on the agenda this almost afternoon at this point is our committee reports. Commissioner Kaylee.
Thank you. And while folks are exiting the room, I do also just want to thank Representative Keeler. One, a couple of the committees that I sit on are the Adult Mental Health Local Advisory Council and the Children's Mental Health Local Advisory Council. And she is really invested in seeing improvements to outcomes in that sphere. And so she's planning to attend the next couple meetings for those two groups. So thank you for giving us that time in those meetings as well. And my first report is actually from the Adult Mental Health Local Advisory Council. We met last week on Tuesday, and we had a presentation from First Link on the implementation of 988 and how that is going to work locally here. First Link is who is answering that line. We had a good conversation about what happens if somebody calls in and they don't speak English fluently or they don't speak English at all. How are we going to make sure that they can access local resources? And First Link said that they're using a language line. And anecdotally, within maybe 13 seconds, somebody can get connected to a translator when they call that service now. Also, as I said, Representative Keeler is planning to attend that next Local Advisory Council meeting. That meeting is attended by most of our major providers in the area for mental health services, where they share updates on what kind of wait lists they have, what barriers their clients are experiencing. And then we also have consumers of mental health services sharing their stories and barriers in those as well. So that should be a great conversation next month. On the 17th, I met with the chamber about some of the items that they brought forward to us today. And then that evening, I attended the Historical and Cultural Society of Clay County Board Meeting. During the summer, that board has been moving our meetings around the county to different historical sites. At this meeting, we went to Georgetown, to where the Hudson Bay Trading Post was. And we learned that it wasn't so much a trading post, not a single fur was traded there ever. It was really just a warehouse. And there's a local black powder club that owns that property now and is maintaining that historical site. So thank you to them for their work in preserving that history. And we also toured a local farm nearby. That was a great meeting. On the 18th, the Clay County Suicide and Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition met. We talked about the Moorhead Alternative Learning Center is putting in a calming room for students that need a space to get out of class and to reset. There's a lot of resources, and staff will be checking in with them in that space. And the hope is that this can keep kids in school instead of going home. So if they have that ability to access resources, access a staff person to help them regulate their emotions, and get back to a good place so that they can continue learning for the rest of the day. Look forward to seeing how that works in that space. It was also shared that there is a training coming up on the Columbia Suicide Severity Rating Scale. If anybody is interested in attending that, it's free. And that'll be on September 29th at 2:00 PM. That's a Thursday. I will share that link on my Commissioner Facebook page. And I can also share that with Steve if there's any commissioners that are interested in attending that. That's the scale that our first responders use. That's the scale that First Link is using when they answer that 988 line. And so it's just a really good tool to kind of see where somebody's at and what interventions they might need. On the 19th, I attended our Early Childhood Initiative meeting. We got updates on the mental health and dental grants. I mentioned the dental grant earlier when Jane Newbauer was here speaking on some of her projects. We will be, like I said, providing dental care at Bright Sky and at MICA's mission for folks staying in those spaces, and also an incentive program for kids to develop healthy dental habits. That's that dental grant. And I've talked about the mental health grant here many times. So I just reported on that last week. I don't need to report on that again. We also had Lisa Beal from Public Health talk about her role and how she came to that position within our agency. There were some questions at the very end of our ECI meeting from childcare providers about vaccine boosters. So we're going to connect that group up with Public Health to get some of those questions answered. I also had multiple meetings with residents throughout the community to talk about very I also had multiple meetings with residents throughout the community to talk about various concerns and things that are going well. It's always nice to hear from residents. You can reach out to me anytime via email, or my phone number is on our website as well. I love hearing from folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaylee. Commissioner Gross?
I had a meeting on Wednesday, there was a virtual meeting with Ryan McCarthy Architek, where we discussed further, further things with the Detox Center, talked about floor finishes, ceiling heights, all kinds of things like that. So, I don't know if that meeting went on after 3:00 o'clock when I had to leave for another meeting, but I don't know, if there's further things that we have to discuss, probably, I don't know, Jenny or Steve, you were on, making further talk about that. And then I also just had a couple of meetings with residents. I want to thank Matt Jacobson, I set up a meeting with him, and the resident, one of the, or business place wanted to develop in an area, and Matt pretty well explained to them that they've, why they can't develop there and stuff like that. And it's unfortunate they couldn't, but they're looking for space to develop along I-94. And also, yesterday I talked with Josh Schroeder, another resident, wanted to move some houses across the county, and they were trying to get the permits and stuff like that. And Josh really was very good in helping them. I appreciate Josh and Matt for helping me out with those residents that were needed help this week. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Gross. Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you. August 16th, we had a diversion executive meeting, and there's an awful lot of planning, and there's a lot of changes that are coming into place now that most of things are lining up. And one of the things that's being talked about is the replacing of the Outreach Committee and the Lands Committee. The Lands Committee is still going to be there, but probably in a as-needed role. But what they're looking at is a planning committee membership sort of thing, similar to what we have here. And I think the goal is that there'd be, certainly there'd be representatives of each member entity on the diversion authority that would serve on that. But there will be more to come on that, that's just in a design phase. And that's, was done through the deal that we had as a diversion. We had a, two retreats with all members present, and that was one of the things that we all kind of said, probably would be beneficial to move in that direction going forward. Then on the Thursday morning, we had a meeting regarding the Joint Dispatch with the Minnesota Members. And that, that meeting was at the request of Morehead. There's, right now, in the, in the JPA, it's designated that Morehead pays its share of the dispatch directly to Cass County. And the request from Morehead was that they would rather see that changed, where they would pay Clay County as opposed to Cass County. And so we had the sheriff there, Commissioner Ebinger and I, and our county attorney's office, Steve was there, city manager, the mayor of Morehead, and council member Hendrickson. And what we talked about, one way that we could potentially move forward that is, is to establish a memorandum, a long-term memorandum of understanding, that would, we, and that was proposed, I think, from myself and us as a county, that, that we need to make sure that we have that protection measure in there if we're going to change things. So, so there, you know, it's in the talking phase right now, but there is, I think, both the, John Shockley was there representing the city, and I think there's going to be a, some draft of an MOU that they're going to work together on between the city, and I know our attorney, Brian Milton, was, was also going to be involved with the, with that. And I think, Steve, you're going to be partaking in that draft. And we had the conversations, and I think, you know, our sheriff and everybody there, I think, was comfortable with moving in that direction, provided that we had, there's agreement on a MOU. We do MOUs and a lot, a lot of other, we have an MOU with the Law Enforcement Center, with the City of Moray right now. So there's, there are some ways that we can still, I think, accomplish what the City of Moray is requesting. Then, excuse me, then, yesterday, we had our transfer station construction meeting, and that is just, it's going well now, I think. Right now, the biggest issue that can cause further delays, and I think they talked about the potential of, one of the things that could set us back from what Commissioner Mojo was hoping we can still have is a December finish, and that is the availability, when needed, of concrete, because of all of the things going on. And, you know, so, a delay in concrete can push everything else back. And so, so right now, I think that's kind of the concern that would, would potentially move that back. But other than that, I think the, I think there's, they're working on drywall, they're putting windows in over there now, there's, carpet has been selected, and paint colors have been selected, and window coverings have been selected, so it's moving in the right direction. We still have some work to do on FFNE for that, and Commissioner Mojo and I will be working with our new solid waste manager and with Steve to make sure that we, we get that all incorporated. Furnitures, fixtures, and that type of thing. Office equipment and all that type of stuff, so. And that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Last week, I attended the Board of Adjustment hearings. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Commissioner Ebinger?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be reporting on two weeks. I missed last week for medical reasons. On the 11th, I attended Beyond the Yellow Ribbon meeting. Commissioner Gross reported on that last week and did a good job of covering all the bases. Later that day, myself and Commissioner Kaylee were at the election canvassing here at the courthouse. On the 17th, I virtually attended the Greater Fargo-Morehead EDC Executive Committee meeting, discussed some new nominees and action from the Governance Committee. There was a discussion on our office space for the EDC, and the decision is made to remain in the current office space with a reduced footprint. They're going to multipurpose offices, and a five-to-seven-year lease is being discussed now. Also, we passed a motion, start the process of developing and hiring a vice president of business development. Later that day, I met with Shannon Foole and the staff that was here today with the chamber, just to discuss their presentation today. On the 18th, I virtually attended the Suicide and Substance Abuse Prevention meeting, which Commissioner Kaylee has reported on. I do want to add one part to that. There was a 988 update from Jennifer Illich with First Link, and just a couple of, I think, salient factors she brought up is, the SAMSA grant is now in place, so they've hired some employees, they were holding off until the grant funding had got to them. At this point, 1-800 will still get you, the 1-800 number they've used will still get you onto the suicide prevention line. And you can chat, you can chat or text these calls too, but it won't take you to a local operator. It'll take you to the national, and that will, may make it more difficult to resource some of our local access resources we've got. But once they get these employees up and running, the text and chat features should get you to a local operator. And also, just a clarification, 988 does not function like 911 does. People, if they have reluctance, call in because they think their location will be identified, or their, their information will be identified, that's not the case. It's not like a 911 call. And additionally, they have very, very strict levels, protocols, on when 911 will be notified. So if people are reluctant because they think it's going to involve the police, it generally is, is not a concern, and to call 988 and share your, your needs with, with the operator that answers. Later that day, the Triple RDC, the Dispatch Center meeting with the Minnesota Partners, I attended that virtually. Commissioner Campbell explained pretty much what we've come to on that. John Shockley's been asked to work on an MOU. I think it's important that we have people committed, and we have some guarantees before we take on the entire funding of this, this operation. And, you know, I would hope, and what I, what I discussed, was instead of something you sign every one or three or five years, this be put in place, and you be given a one or two-year notification of an intent to leave. And at that point, there's at least some warning. If we have to go back and get this thing, get funding guaranteed every three or five years, I think that puts the county in a, in a difficult position. So we'll see how it works out, but certainly, an MOU to protect our interests is in, is in order. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Ebinger. As mentioned, last week, I attended the Board of Adjustment meeting. I also attended the Planning Commission meeting. We did have two hearings, conditional use permits, both regarding animals, and, and one was a feedlot after the fact that was approved, and then the other one was a horse boarding facility that we made some tweaks to. I also attended the detox facility conversations, certainly hopeful that we can address not only space needs for staff and, and general workflow issues, but potential space needs and opportunities for programming as we address the myriad of issues that the folks we serve are facing. On Thursday, I helped with discussions with Representative Fishbach, who was in town. We had a meeting at the sheriff's office, certainly heard from the sheriff and his, his department in regards to issues that they're noticing, and, and potential opportunities for legislation that would be helpful. We also toured the juvenile detention facility and had conversation with James and his staff in regards to legislation pieces that are helpful. The Representative Fishbach was certainly impressed at the stages of care that the juveniles over there experience daily, and, and certainly the staff over there just do an amazing job. That afternoon, I had a MetroCog Policy Board meeting. We did have conversation on the 2022-2025 Transportation Improvement Program, talked about the 21-22 Unified Planning Program Amendment, and then had a 2050 demographic forecast update. And if folks would like to access that information, that is at MetroCog, FMMetroCog.org. Certainly huge information packets that are available. I attended Monday the Lakeland Mental Health Committee meeting. We did have great updates from the centers, access times, even with workforce challenges, continued to be good in the process of making sure that they have all the programming in place for when our children return to school. As noted, Lakeland is present in all of the Clay County schools, that's a huge asset. And they are having conversations in regards to expanding the Morehead Clinic site. They had, a few years ago, secured the land, so now are working with an architect in regards to that construction project that should move forward soon. But as noted there, in the same as with our construction projects, it takes 52 days to get a door, so dealing with those delays. I also attended the construction meeting yesterday for our transfer facility. Certainly, Commissioner Campbell updated that well, and we're continuing to deal with any issues that go forward, but it's really taking shape nicely, and I'm excited in anticipation for what that facility will provide. Our administrator and I have worked together, as I think has probably been noted, the RFPs for our substance abuse facility were submitted, and we do have several different companies that have provided that. I would like to call a special board meeting, not a board meeting, but a workgroup session next Tuesday, at 8:30. We will, our administrator will be handing out the RFPs that were presented from the different companies. My hope is that, as commissioners, you'll have time to review those over the next week. That day, I would like to narrow that group of applications down so that we can have board interviews for that project. The board interviews, I would like to be in the afternoon of September 6th, if that works for all of your schedules. So, couple homework assignments, one, review those if possible, so that we can have a discussion of those RFPs at the workgroup session next Tuesday. But also, another agenda item for that meeting would, you know, I know that several of you serve on the Insurance Committee, and we've talked about the possibility of self-funding and what the financial implications could be for that piece. Steve has asked the individual to come and present for the full board that information. Certainly, that's not an action meeting, just would be a workgroup for any commissioners that would like to ask additional questions on that.
And that's on the 30th?
Yeah, the 30th, next Tuesday at 8:30. And we'll advertise, it's currently advertised that there's no board meeting, but there will be a workgroup for that. And then also, if we could go ahead and get on the date, that Tuesday afternoon, what was the time, we said 1:00 to?
Probably 1:00 till 4:30.
4:30, okay. So we'll advertise that as well, if that works.
That's the detox meeting.
Well, that's, yes. So, we do have that earmarked as a potential meeting, but certainly, this board needs to decide and pick someone for the RFP process. Not RFP process, but for the project. Does that work?
And that would be the 6th?
Yes, for the afternoon. Yes. 1:00 to 4:30. Okay. All right, Administrator Larson, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just after the last board meeting, we did have a brief pick discussion.
Oh, yeah, we forgot to report on that, sorry.
Yep, on the CDL wage requests. We've, we've had some, both with our highway department and our, and our landfill, we've had some challenges as far as securing, securing the CDL drivers. And so, we've had, we had some discussion about that, and we'll probably, the pick will probably be bringing some additional information forward in the future. On the 16th, I met with Lori Johnson, Nancy Gunderson, and Matt Jacobson on an ongoing property issue within Clay County. On this, that afternoon, I also met with the regional administrators, city administrators in Minnesota. Much of our discussions focused on workforce, what they're seeing for their insurance increases and their union negotiations. On the 17th, I met with Matt Jacobson on a series of planning zoning issues. That day, I also met with Kathy and her staff on the budget presentation that you heard today. I talked to Scott Fettick on the upcoming design meeting that we had last week. One of the, I think, just of note, one of the things that we did briefly touch on during that meeting is, you know, when it comes to state and federal dollars, sometimes we have to look at Davis Bacon and B3, energy efficiency things. There, there is a question that the state brought forward in regards to B3, and so Troy and his staff are looking at, working with the state to find some additional information on that. The challenge would be, is if the B3 is not factored into the cost of the project. And so if we would have to, have to comply with those, there would be some additional discussions we would need to have. That afternoon, had the design meeting that's been addressed. I talked on the 18th, met with Kathy McKay on a series of public health issues. We had the Red River Regional Dispatch, dispatch agreement that Commissioner Campbell has reported on. 18th, we had an MCC JPA prep meeting. We have a Thursday meeting this week for our MCC JPA, and talked about some of the agenda items there. The 18th, I also had a department evaluation. On the 18th, the RFQs that we received, I did meet briefly with Joe Olson, we discussed that. I do have your homework assignments here with me today, and I did, did create a document for you guys. for you guys to, based on the RFP, to kind of rate those and score those, so we do have that meeting. The hope is that we won't spend hours talking about it, but processing through your score sheets to identify those top three candidates. Participate in the Resource Recovery Owners Meeting that's been addressed. Again, just of note, we did post a Good Jobs Challenge Grant that Ms. Foole talked about earlier this morning. There's a community press conference in celebration. You each received an email for that, and so if you are interested, they sent this follow-up email yesterday that asked yesterday, no, if you'd be attending, so if you plan to attend, one, you can because we posted it, secondly, they're looking for that confirmation from you. And I believe that concludes my report.
Thank you. Anything further, Mr. Leaser?
Nothing, Madam Chair, thank you.
Colleen? We are adjourned.